Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Let's call this meeting to order. It's a regular scheduled meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency of Boca Raton. It's Monday, November 17th, 2025. The time is 1:30 PM. Please, everyone, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Sidens, please call the roll.
Chair Victor.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Thankful to be here.
Commissioner Drucker.
Here.
Commissioner Knackless.
Here.
Commissioner Singer.
Here.
All present.
Very well. Thank you. Mr. Sohany, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are no amendments to the agenda.
Very well. Pardon me. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If there's no corrections, we'll seek approval for the minutes of October 27th and November 4th, 2025.
Move adoption of the minutes, Mr. Chair.
Very well. Second to Ms. Knackless. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There are no presentations today, so we'll proceed to quasi-judicial and related public hearings, of which there are one, which is the reopening of an existing hearing. Ms. Sidens, please read the title of the IDA, CRP 16-02R2.
D-DRI, IDA number CRP 160202, excuse me, O2R2. Consideration of an Individual Development Approval of the City of Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency, Amending IDA Number CRP 1602 as amended by IDA Number CRP 1602R1A for the Camino Square Phase Two project located on the western approximately 4.54 acre portion of the overall approximately 9.13 acre property generally located at 171 West Camino Real to authorize a change in use from 37,399 square feet of retail high in two buildings to 374 residential units and 23,368 square feet of retail high consisting of 2,000 square feet of fast food, 5,805 square feet of quality restaurant, and 15,563 square feet of retail in two eight-story buildings totaling 455,371 square feet, each with a maximum height not to exceed 81 feet 8 inches, with additional architectural features for a maximum total height not to exceed 97 feet 8 inches, and additionally including a seven-story 291,304 square foot parking structure integrated in Building Two, together with a technical deviation from Section 23-190D Code of Ordinances to reduce the required driveway width from 34 feet to 33 feet, a reduction of one foot at the existing Southwest Third Avenue access, considering the abandonment of two 12-wide portions of utility easement located at the northern portion of the property resulting in approximately 65,371 square feet remaining in downtown sub-area G, including a conversion of uses, providing for appeal or providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Kaler. Can you please review the quasi-judicial procedure that will govern this public hearing reopening?
Sure. For the CRA in the public, this is a continuation of the prior public hearing held in October. However, the rules continue to apply, and those state that each applicant requesting approval, relief, or other action from the CRA shall disclose at the commencement or continuance of the public hearing any consideration, just payment, or other consideration provided or committed directly or on its behalf for an agreement to support or withhold objection to the requested relief or action today, which is approval of IDA 1602R2. A summary of the quasi-judicial procedures governing the proceeding is attached to the agenda, and a copy can be obtained from the city clerk.
Thank you very much. Members, if you have any further ex parte disclosures since the last meeting, please set forth them now. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My ex parte disclosures were submitted to the clerk and can be found in our file on this matter.
Thank you very much. Ms. Knackless.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since the last meeting, I've received several emails from residents, and I've also had a meeting on November 10th with Ellie Zacharitis, Carolina Villanueva, and Juan Porro at the site, and I also received a voicemail from Ms. Villanueva on Friday, but I did not get to speak to her over the weekend.
Thank you very much. Ms. Drucker. Welcome back.
Thank you. Glad to be back. I had a couple things. I had a meeting on October 28th with Carolyn Villanueva, Juan Porras, and Ellie Zacharitis. I received emails, and I think we all have on file, for residents and from the applicant. I also received some voice calls over the weekend on Friday and yesterday, Sunday, from Carolyn Villanueva. We did not connect. I finally connected with her today, November 17th, this morning, about the project. That's my disclosure.
Thank you. Mr. Singer.
Thank you. I also spoke since the last hearing with three representatives of applicant Ms. Zacharitis, Ms. Villanueva, and Mr. Porro, met them at the site, had a follow-up conversation with Ms. Villanueva and Ms. Zacharitis, and received several emails from residents, all of which have been sent to the city account and are on file. Thank you.
Thank you. And likewise, I've also sent my disclosures to the city clerk as well as had a meeting with, just a phone call with Ms. Zacharitis this morning. I did also receive a phone call from Ms. Villanueva, but I unfortunately did not have a chance to return that call. So, now, any person wishing to speak on this matter, please stand while the clerk shall administer the oath.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you may give before this public hearing will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sohany.
Mr. Chair, our Development Services Director, Mr. Shad, along with Ms. Lesser, will make the presentation.
Very well. Ms. Lesser, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Sohany. Members of the board, for the record, Susan Lester, senior planner. On October 14th, 2025, the CRA board at the hearing, the board continued the application and asked that the applicant revise plans to increase the retail square footage. The previous site plan proposed a total of 394 residential units in two eight-story buildings, approximately 80 feet 8 inches tall, with 8,632 square feet of retail and seven stories of structured parking containing 793 parking spaces. On October 30th, the applicant submitted a revised application, including revised plans and updated traffic and parking analysis as well. The revised application now requests authorization to construct 374 residential units in two eight-story buildings, approximately 81 feet 8 inches tall, and approximately 97 feet 8 inches, including all architectural features. Together, they total approximately 455,371 square feet and structured parking totaling 291,304 square feet with 23,368 square feet of retail high. The request also includes the technical deviation from City Code of Ordinances Section 23-190D to reduce the driveway width at the existing internal drive at Southwest Third Avenue access by one foot from 34 feet to 33 feet, and the abandonment of two existing 12-foot wide utility easements, and both of those remain unchanged. And due to the change in the proposed uses, the project no longer requires a transfer of office equivalency development from any downtown sub-area. Pardon me. Therefore, only a conversion of uses within downtown sub-area G is required. This is the revised site plan, and the residential units are decreased by 20 to 374 residential units. The height of both buildings increased by one foot to 81 feet 8 inches, and a maximum total height, including all architectural features, to 97 feet 8 inches. The retail square footage has increased by 14,736 square feet to 23,368 square feet. It is now comprised of 5,805 square feet of retail, I'm sorry, square feet of restaurant, 2,000 square feet of fast food, and 15,563 square feet of retail. The portions of retail along Southwest Third Avenue will be 20 feet in height or double height, enhancing the aesthetic architectural quality and creating a more inviting covered space for outdoor dining. The central courtyard is also a covered gathering area, and that's at the center of the project. It's now labeled the North Plaza, right in this area here. And that increased in size and now provides 1,080 square feet of outdoor dining. The existing pocket park along Camino Real, that's located along the southern perimeter of the property, right in this area here, that is now labeled the South Plaza, and that has been redesigned. And the linear green space along the northern property line remains unchanged. Vehicular access continues to be provided by one existing full east-west access driveway along Southwest Third Avenue, one existing full access driveway on West Camino Real, and one left-in, right-out driveway on the alley just north of West Camino Real. Due to the additional retail uses, as shared parking analysis was submitted pursuant to the D-DRI Development Order, Section 24B3, a total of 793 parking spaces are required and 793 parking spaces are provided. The open space project for the, the open space for the project decreased slightly from 40.37% to 40.15%. That's a decrease in approximately 879 square feet, and that's due to the increase in retail square footage, and that would be at the ground level of Building One. This is the Building Two north elevation and the south elevation of Building One, right below. Phase Two continues the architectural style and pattern found in Phase One, as the buildings incorporate a mix of stone veneer, stucco, as well as a neutral color palette. Additionally, various window styles are used across the facade, as well as other architectural features such as banding, balconies, as well as trellises. This is the west elevation with the existing access road separating both Buildings One and Two. And this is the east, south, and west elevations of Building Two. And as you can see, the structured parking is north of the residential portion in Building Two, and that is at a proposed height of 72 feet 2 inches. Staff has also included the following changes to the conditions of approval, and they are as follows. At the request of the Public Works and Engineering Division with the agreement of the applicant, new condition number 13.h.3 requires the applicant to dedicate a two-foot wide easement along its Camino Real frontage, and that would be for the purpose of future mobility enhancements. Based on the discussions between the applicant and the Public Works and Engineering Division, in response to specific concerns raised by members of the public, new condition number 13K requires that prior to the assurance of a building permit for Phase Two, the applicant remit a voluntary proffer in the amount of $15,000 to be applied toward the installation of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the existing crosswalk, which is located south of the property on Camino Real. And conditions number 18 and 19 prohibit a bar or additional patron seating area in the restaurant uses unless it's demonstrated and approved by staff that required parking is satisfied with their inclusion, and limit the total square footage of the restaurant uses. Both of these conditions are to ensure that the assumptions provided in the shared parking analysis are adhered to. And in conclusion, the Development Services Department recommends approval of the individual development approval application as the project complies with ordinance number 4035. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions for staff? No further questions? Okay, then we will open up the public hearing and allow the petitioner first speak. Ms. Zacharitis, since this is the reopening, I'm hopeful that will 10 minutes be enough in this situation?
Yes, that's plenty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ellie Zacharitis, 14 Southeast Fourth Street. Good afternoon. I'll just, before I actually start my presentation, I just want to remind the board that why the CRA was created to begin with, and that is to eliminate slum and blight. After Windexy left in 2010, that is exactly what this property was. Despite desperate tries to fill the space and fill the Windexy retail space, as well as the balance of the space, we were unable to do so. With the Phase One development, I will add that properties even outside of the downtown were significantly improved, and we discussed that or touched upon it last time. For example, the sober homes have left and have been completely renovated. The market across the street is also under renovations right now as well. Okay, so I'm just going to focus on the changes we've made since the last time we were before you. I'll just do this very quickly. Susan, thank you for your thorough presentation. As Susan noted, we did increase the retail. We heard all of you, and have increased the retail by almost 15,000 from what was previously before you. Now we are at 23,368 square feet. We also reduced the unit count from, by 20, from 394 to 374. And as Susan noted, we increased the height by one foot. The reason being is we really wanted that retail and commercial space to be viable, so we've made it double heights, and we've added one foot to have that 20-foot clearance. We still have no variances. As Susan noted, and as we discussed at the last hearing, we do have a very minor one-foot technical deviation. We are more than happy to remove that request and add the additional pavement. As I noted previously, both the applicant and staff would rather have landscaping than that additional one foot of pavement, but again, if it is the will of the board, we are more than happy to oblige. We still meet or exceed all open space setbacks, parking, all code requirements. So, we went through the design elements of how to really activate this additional retail. So, the entire frontage along Third Avenue is completely 100% open to the public, commercial, retail, restaurant space. In accordance with ordinance 5581, it's very important to note that that ordinance applies only to street frontages, of which our drive aisle is not considered a street. So, for purposes of this project, 5581 applies to our limited frontage along Third, as well as our limited frontage along what I call the Road to Nowhere. So, that is what 5581 requires. It's also important to note that 5581 does not require that the uses on the ground floor be open to the public, but rather, I call it the lights-on type of ordinance. They want lobbies, they want gyms, things of that nature where somebody walking by, there is going to be lights versus a residential unit on the ground floor that is dark at night. But despite meeting or exceeding what ordinance 5581 requires along our street frontages, we have brought that all the way through our driveway, both on the north and the south side. Let me keep going. Oh, sorry, I forgot about my little images. So, there they are, both on the north and the south, as well as on Third. Some additional things to discuss, the 9,200 square foot linear park still remains. We did expand the paseo, which is right about there, from 16 to 35 feet. We really wanted to create this welcoming opening into the courtyard area with outdoor dining and landscaping, and that is what this area will house. And also, oh, sorry, let me go back. And also in blue on the bottom, I do not believe any of the council members requested us to revisit the pocket park, but we did hear some neighbors at the last hearing discussing that it's not really activated. So, my client would like this opportunity, as we're through this process, to go ahead and add additional monies and beautification to that pocket park. So, this is a zoomed-up version of the south building, that courtyard area. You have Third right here. So, again, that paseo is now expanded to 35 feet here. We really envision a restaurant use here, fingers crossed, which will allow for a nice significant amount of outdoor dining here. We did not need to remove, we removed eight units from this particular quadrant. We did not need to do that, but we thought it was important, again, to make sure or hope that the restaurants and commercial space are viable. We thought it would be nice to have double height, both interior and exterior. So, we removed eight units from there. So, when you're standing in the courtyard, and I have pictures, you're at least 20 feet before the ceiling is above you. Our inspiration was really Worth Avenue. For those of you that have gone, there's lots of paseos, there's lots of meandering pocket parks and outdoor dining and things of that nature. So, that is the paseo. It is pretty expansive. And this is sitting in the courtyard or standing in the courtyard, as we have images of both doing. So, as you can see, you have that double height there, which makes it not feel so claustrophobic and enclosed. And this is that pocket park to the south, where you want to enhance it and make it look like part and parcel of the north pocket park or the north courtyard, excuse me. With regard to traffic, the first column, as you see, is a January 31st, 2018. That is the approved traffic for this project. It's 5,320. That is when Phase One was, or excuse me, Phase Two was proposed as only a shopping center. When we were before you, a few weeks ago, we were proposing a reduction in traffic to 4,167. Now, with this increase of retail and commercial space, we are up to 4,431. While it is more than what was previously before you, it is still 889 daily trips less than what was previously approved. As Susan noted, we are no longer asking for a transfer. I do want to put up this slide just to make it clear that this is despite almost 115,000 square feet of OEs having been transferred out of SubArea G. So, nonetheless, we were still able to make it work within the SubArea GOEs that are allotted. Again, want to remind you, despite not having a transfer, despite not having additional traffic than what was previously approved, we did spend over $3 million on improvements on Camino. I didn't make a slide, and I should have. I apologize. But right around here, your Public Works Director had requested that we contribute or pay for the RRFBs, which are those flashing beacons, which of course we agreed to, and that was one of the conditions Ms. Lesser read into the record. Again, we meet all code requirements of 4035. That includes 5581. This is a project that is as of right. Here are some pretty pictures. This is looking from the west to the east. This would be Eighth over here, and this is our east-west drive. Let me go back to that. Again, you could see the double height of the retail. We're hoping that will be welcoming, and the neighborhood will come and utilize all the proposed retail and restaurants that we have. With that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Zacharitis, you had mentioned on one of the last couple of slides that your belief that this project is as of right. Could you explain what you mean by that, like in layman's terms?
Sure. So, there's, I call it my Bible, is ordinance 4035, which lays out regulations. If you meet those regulations, that project means it's as of right. You have no asks, no request for relief. Here, the only, literally, the only request we have is that one-foot driveway reduction, and just at the driveway throat, not throughout the driveway, which we are more than willing to remove if it is the will of this board, but other than that, this project is as of right. Interestingly enough, I was reminded recently by Mr. Vanderplug, who helped draft ordinance 4035, and perhaps Mr. Camejo would remember as well, but I totally forgot about this, that downtown projects were supposed to be under expedited review. I believe it was something along the lines of six weeks with no public hearings. It wasn't until there was one building in our downtown that the then-sitting council did not really like the aesthetics of, which I will not name because it would insult the architect, and I happen to like the building. From, at that juncture, that is when public hearings started. So, to go back to your point about as of right, when you, previously, when you submitted a project in the downtown, if it met A, B, C, D, E criteria, that was it. It got approved administratively.
Thank you. Along the same lines of explaining something, can you also, we've heard vested for concurrency. Can you explain that also?
Sure. So, when, okay, so, we've talked a lot about OEs being calculated. There was a bucket of OEs in the beginning of ordinance 4035. That bucket of OEs did not come out of thin air. That number was created based on concurrency, how much traffic can be handled on the roads, what infrastructure needs to be in place to handle water, sewer, traffic, all of those things. So, when ordinance 4035, the inception of it, there was a lot of infrastructure improvements that occurred to ensure that the development rights that are now being given in the late 80s, the infrastructure is there to support it. So, all of that has been done. So, in this particular instance, when we are not transferring from one subarea to the other, we already know that the infrastructure in SubArea G, and I'm not just talking about traffic, I mean all infrastructure, has, is, meets concurrency and capacity, because we're not transferring into we're not transferring into this subarea. Now, in certain times, in many situations, as I mentioned to the board previously, I can't remember the last time I haven't, I didn't have a transfer. When you have that additional transfer as part of your application, you do have to do another analysis to make sure that there is capacity and concurrency to satisfy the movement of one bucket of development from this subarea to the other. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I also, can I ask another? Thank you. The number 13K, the condition of approval, the RRFB, does that go all the way across Camino, or is that just?
I don't know if staff has plans to go all the way across, Ms. Knackless, but what we were asked to do was really just connect this here. In my discussions with Public Works, they didn't feel we needed to go all the way across because here is a light, here is a light, here is a light, and here is a light. It was just that one movement right here that was of concern.
Okay. And I know in 2019, you did, and you can see on this slide, the road improvements that were made. On the, and on the south side, we have that nice bike lane that goes all the way through. But on the north side, the bike lane has to kind of curve back, and Mr. Wilson, in his presentation, kind of presented that. And I know, I know there's concurrency, but I know things have changed a lot since, in the last few years, the way people get around. Has there been any discussion about anything being done with that, with that area, either trying to make that a little safer?
So, there was approximately four years of discussion on this intersection. Again, back to your question about concurrency, we are vested for concurrency, so no improvements were required. But I happen to have a pretty phenomenal client, in my opinion, who listened to the residents and their concerns about traffic. This was not the design, for those of you that were on the board in 2018, or 19, whenever that was approved, this was not the desired design by this side of the aisle. This was much discussions with your city staff about how they wanted it designed. I applaud the city. We worked hand-in-hand with Fresh Market. There was a land swap that had to happen in order to even get any bike lanes on here. So, again, our original design was more mobility-focused, but this is the design that your staff chose.
Keeping the bike lanes.
No, no, the other design had bike lanes too, but it wasn't an expansion of this much roadway. It was a roundabout, it was crosswalks, there were, it was a totally different design.
Okay. Okay, thank you for now.
Thank you. Just as a quick aside, Ms. Knackless, you should know that I've had some separate conversations with the staff, with Mr. Sohaney, with Mr. Camejo, and some of the traffic about allocating some of our downtown walkability project funds, and some of our CRA road and sidewalk improvement funds to piggyback alongside this project at the specific intersection to implement some of those changes, not to the full extent that Mr. Wilson, but to do a meaningful upgrade alongside the developers' proposals. So, that's something we'll talk about a little later, but I do want you to know that that was happening behind the scenes, of course. Thank you. Commissioners, Ms. Knackless, any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Drucker. Mr. Singh?
Yes, could you just please put back up the slide that had the, the pocket park? So, the tree would go more toward where the, the change in elevation is on that site, toward the center?
Yes, correct.
All right, great. And then, the, to the north, to the northern edge or the top edge of this slide, that paved walkway remains open to the public to connect from the street all the way up to the central courtyard.
It does, and that is a covered colonnade that is 8 feet 8 inches in width.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Ms. Zacharitis, thank you for working with your client on making these meaningful changes. Certainly, it is an increase in, in retail. In terms of the open space, can you go back to the, I guess, the little, yes, or?
This one?
The site, the overview, the site plan there? Yes, that's exactly. Is that tree existing? Is that an existing tree that we're keeping that we're planting?
We're planting that tree.
We're planting a tree to make a, to make a courtyard there. And the idea is that there's, could be several thousand feet of restaurant usage, I guess, on the east, on the western side there, to have outdoor dining?
That is our hope.
Likewise, thank you. And in terms of making the open space and the, the colonnade open to the public, are there going to be hours of restriction here? In terms of, will it be closed in the evenings for security purposes? Has that, has there been any discussion on just safety and security?
We have not gotten that far, sorry, Mr. Victor.
Okay, I think, I think you have some time to, to decide that, but certainly, it's a, a meaningful change there, just, just one concern I had over there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes.
This is more of a question, thank you, Ms. Zacharitis, this is more a question for staff. On the new conditions of approval, where it says conditions number 18 and 19 prohibit a bar or patron seating area in the restaurant uses unless it's demonstrated to staff that required parking is satisfied, what does that mean to us? Like, if we're having the discussion of open seating here with a restaurant, like, what does that mean in terms of the project?
Brain the Chat Development Services Director. So, the, the number of parking spaces that were calculated for these uses do not include a bar. So, a bar requires a certain amount of parking per linear foot, is how it's calculated under this ordinance, and so, it doesn't include that. However, if they were to have a different set of tenants that, you know, there was room in the number of required, of required and provided parking to have a bar, then that might work, but it's not under the, the way it's been calculated, there's no room for it.
Follow-up question?
Sure.
So, if, for example, the restaurant has a bar inside, and then around this tree, they decide they want to put a bar in that area, that would require additional parking?
Yes.
If I could add to that, Mr. Shad is 100% correct. For bars, it's one parking space for every 2.2 linear feet. However, for outdoor seating, and I think maybe that might be the confusion, Ms. Drucker, for outdoor seating in our downtown, you are allowed to provide 25% of your, of outdoor customer service area without being parked, 25% of what is internal. So, as long as we don't exceed that, we can have tables outside without any additional parking requirements. I think staff's concern is, we don't know who the tenants are right now, so we don't know what the build-outs are going to look like, and if there is a 50-foot bar that we haven't counted for, we need to take that into consideration.
That's right. And I want to clarify, she's right about the outdoor seating for a restaurant use. Whether parking is required for an outdoor bar is something I've never thought about before this moment, but my off-the-cuff reaction would be, no, it would need additional parking.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we all understand that in a downtown, there should be restaurants, there should be bars, there should be less parking. I happen to be at an event on Saturday night in PGA. There's a restaurant up there, look it up, everyone, it's called Salute, very nice. And they have an inside bar, and they have an outside bar, and their outside bar is around this tree, which I found really fascinating. I hadn't seen this presentation until today. And there was, there was a valet, and there was ample parking, and there were people Ubering and getting there. So, again, maybe it's when we discuss our 4035, but what an incredible concept, and it was very similar to this project, because it was, it's in a, it's in a commercial area where homes are on the, a little bit farther on the backside, but if you look it up, you'll see what I'm saying. That's what, that's what triggered that question. I kind of knew that, but I just wanted to make sure that we're not deterring. If we want to bring a nice restaurant here with bar and open seating, like, with the weather that we're having right now, that's kind of what we need to stop thinking about extra parking. Thank you.
Thank you. And one last question.
Sure.
One of the conditions was a, an easement of two feet, was it?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
What is the basis for that?
So, let me see if I can get a better slide. Ah, I'll just go here.
It was related to mobility, or?
That's correct. So, I'm sorry, I should have had a better slide, but it's right here on our south property line, Mr. Victor. I believe there's already a six-foot sidewalk. Staff would like the ability in the future to do a shared-use multimodal path there. They have easy eight-foot clearance, they. The City of Boca has at least eight feet of right-of-way there, but they are looking to have maybe 10 feet, and they're also looking to have it clear. And by that, I mean no light posts, no signage. They want a clear mobility path. So, Mr. Beer and Mr. Naresh had called and asked if we'd be willing to provide a two-foot easement for future expansions, and we agreed.
Very well, very well. Any other questions? Sure.
Can we just have the city attorney explain the as-of-right question? Because I did talk to him about that.
Oh, please.
Thank you, Ms. Knackless, and board members. Of course, the applicant has stated as-of-right. Mr. Thompson asked about what that means, and I would just want to clarify, from my opinion, it's a rhetorical device, which is appropriate for an advocate to make a rhetorical device. It is not, under 4035 in our code, or the law, a literal legal code requirement, because if it was, you wouldn't be having this hearing today. You're sitting as fact-finders in a quasi-judicial hearing, and the code does, 4035 provides the CRA board gets to make the decision, so there's discretion there. So, I respect and understand the, the assertion, but legally, I believe, you, you do have discretion to make a determination whether the 4035 criteria have been met. And the other thing I would add is, on Ordinance 5581, it's true that there are a couple of provisions that reference street frontages, but when you look at the whole, it's looking at walkability, synergy between sites, urban design quality, and so, there's, there's a lot of other criteria that are about promoting the pedestrian experience and connectivity as opposed to just the pure street frontages. So, I just wanted to make those two clarifications.
And if I may add to that, I agree with Mr. Keeler, but it's very important to hone in on what he just said. It is up to this board to decide if we met the criteria. And it is your experts, both your traffic, planning, environmental, civil, your experts have reviewed, and your third-party expert, by the way, the City of Boca hires a third-party to review downtown projects and ensure compliance with the regulations. So, when I say as-of-right, it is exactly that. Did we, or did we not, meet the criteria? And as I stand here today, all of your experts, both in-house and external, as well as the applicant, believe we have met that criteria.
And, and again, I know this isn't a debate between lawyers, but just, if I may respond, again, if that, that is not the case under the law, it certainly is the, the facts. Experts frequently give their opinions on matters, but ultimately, this board gets to make an independent decision based upon its own wing of the evidence, and particularly with conversion of uses, the 4035 recognizes your ability to identify compatibility, consistency, things of this nature. So, again, I do appreciate it from a rhetorical standpoint, and it is important, but you all, I just want to, not about this project, but in general, for all projects, you as a board always have that ability to make those decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Keeler. The complex legalese is noted and appreciated. With that being said, we will open the public hearing now.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak can come up to the microphone, state your name and address. You'll have up to three minutes, and please confirm if you have been sworn in. And of course, the first person here today, Mr. Richard Warner. Welcome.
Richard Warner, 1322 Southwest 9th Terrace.
And you have been sworn in, sir. Is that right?
Excuse me?
You've been sworn in.
Yes, I have.
Oh, thank you, sir.
I think, judging from these pictures, that compared to the horrendously ugly Part 1 of this project, this one looks good, but is still a total atrocity. I think it points out that Ordinance 4035 is inadequate. I think it points out that whatever the criteria are, they don't reflect what reality dictates. This intersection is euphemistically referred to as malfunction junction now. This would just make it worse. Now, this project does not serve the community it's being put into. I laughingly said we should change everything west of the tracks to designate it as Downtown 2.0 and severely restrict this type of, of development, but that's up to you. I, I think that the only purpose for this is to enrich billionaires. It does no good for the City of Boca Raton, or the citizens of Boca Raton, and that neighborhood to the north, from Fourth Avenue to the tracks to Palmetto, is one of the few valuable working-class neighborhoods in Boca. It does not serve those people. The term promenade, this is ridiculous. This is not what that neighborhood is all about. It's cemeteries. It's, it's not what this is presenting it as. I do commend this whole presentation, because I think in all the times I've been here, this is the longest we've gone without hearing the word vibrant. This, this project is not vibrant. We did hear the oxymoron Pocket Park. There's no possible reason for doing this. The traffic numbers are spitting in the wind. You know it, I know it. Please, use your judgment and your ability to stop this as opposed to letting it go forth. Thank you.
Mr. Warner, thank you. Mr. Leibenson?
Mike Leibenson, 398 Northeast, Third Court. I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
I'm just going to speak a bit to process. Again, we've had numerous ex-party communications between this developer, developer's representative, and council members. Apparently, there have been meetings on-site with the developer and council members, and assumably, those meetings have not been open to the public. It is my strong recommendation, if not it being a requirement, that this council require that Ms. Zacharitis and all other members of this development team be registered lobbyists with the state if they're going to come before this council and have separate meetings and lobby for this project. In addition, Ms. Zacharitis and all other members of this development team should be prevented from making campaign contributions to this council. It seems to me that over the last four months, the huge majority of this council's time has been taken up by developer proposals and developer needs. In the meantime, hugely important citizen issues are being ignored, including all manner of public safety issues. I've heard about organized car theft rings engaged in communities in central Boca. I've heard about a street racing culture that has infiltrated downtown Boca. We have our floodwater management issues. We have oversight and management of the upcoming $190 million bond issue for the new police station. What many people tell me is out-of-control traffic, and of course, park maintenance and repairs, and arts and cultural initiatives. I think, taking all this together, it leaves the impression to some people that developers in this council have some kind of insider relationship. I would like to hope that that's not the case. I would hope that this council rejects anything that this developer is asking with respect to this substantially changed use from what was previously discussed for this lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Keeler, can you just correct the record in terms of ex parte communications and what is permitted? Because the insinuation that ex parte is not allowed, notwithstanding the First Amendment to the Constitution, is, is concerning that it would be brought up in such a fashion.
So, thank you. The ex parte communication is really, it's just a Latin term for any communication with a decision- decision-maker, other than staff, about a matter that occurs outside of a public hearing. There is nothing inherently wrong with ex parte communications. They are lawful as quasi-judicial decision-makers, meaning you're making a decision on the record. The law requires you that you disclose them and that you place them on the record prior to taking action. So that's the rule. That's what the rule that this body has always complied with, and I think that answers the question.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pearlman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
May I add something to that?
Please.
The fact that we disclose ex parte communications is designed to give everyone the opportunity to know what is being discussed. The proposal out there from that individual would prevent us from hearing any comments from everyone. If a resident wanted to comment on this project, we'd have to invite everyone to the public. We couldn't receive emails. We couldn't receive phone calls. That's an unworkable and nonsensible provision. The fact that we're disclosing them is, puts everyone who might have concerns on notice. And I'm happy to say that, in response to the last meeting when concerns were there, the developer invited me to come to the project, to the site, to talk about those concerns. We're talking about them now. That resulted in changes that were requested as of the last meeting, and it's the same ex parte communication that happens if an individual writes, as we noted, or otherwise. And I think Ms. Zacharitis can speak to her lobbying registration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good? Good. Mr. Pearlman.
Prior to speaking, I'd like to cross-examine Ms. Zacharitis.
Ms. Zacharitis is not subject to cross-examination. She is the attorney in the matter, and she's not a witness.
Okay, I would like to cross-examine whoever is here representing the developer who's not an attorney.
This, we've already had cross-examination at the October hearing. No person from the developer has offered testimony that is subject to cross-examination. Cross-examination today is limited to new testimony or new evidence that has been submitted since the last hearing. The only people that have given testimony that are not the applicant's attorneys are Mr. Shad and Ms. Lesser.
Given that this is an extension of a prior hearing, I would request that cross-examination be permitted.
Mr. Pearlman, now is the time for public comment. There's a separate time for cross-examination.
Okay.
But we're not at that point yet. This is the time for your...
John Pearlman, 498 Northeast A Street. I've been sworn in.
Thank you.
Mr. Keeler, thank you very much for clarifying that the term "as of right" was a term formulated by Ms. Zacharitis for this project. And I have a term for the project as well, "as of wrong." Kimco is the owner of this property. They've owned the property since 1984. They are a REIT specializing in grocery-anchored shopping centers in first-ring suburbs across the United States, as per their website. Ms. Zacharitis showed us some pictures of the state of this shopping center some months or years ago with the Wynn Dixie. That was under the ownership as it currently is. So the current owner permitted that property to dilapidate into the state that it was. So it was their own fault, and they are the current owner now seeking these permissions. I find it disingenuous that a company that specializes in grocery-anchored shopping centers would propose this second phase of the project as a grocery-anchored shopping center, and then conditional on them being allowed to build this high-rise apartment building in the first phase. They're specialists. This is what they do for a living. They knew that if this shopping, they would have known well, well in advance that this shopping center might not be, quote-unquote, "feasible" or being able to be executed in the second phase, as they are experts in that industry. Therefore, they have deceived the city. They've come now and requesting a complete, turning the entire project over on its head and requesting a total variation of the original intention of it, despite being experts in the very business that they proposed to construct on the second phase, which was a grocery-anchored shopping center, a shopping center, which was, by the way, only three stories and would have serviced the community all around. So I think that, given that, given the business of the property owner, given that it's owned the property since 1984, and they've deceived the city in this way, I don't believe this, these permissions to now build such an intense and dense project with apartment buildings and change the essence of the project is warranted. Also, I believe that the parking spaces, I don't think they're going to facilitate the type of activity in terms of the restaurants and all of this that they're proposing. People are going to have to walk there. This property is directly adjacent to the bright line, and as we know, people walking at night and the deaths associated, this is an incredible hazard, the way it's been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. Mr. Wilson, Les Wilson.
I have a presentation. Les Wilson, 649 Southwest 14th Street. I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
I want to bring some good news and bring your attention to something regarding the government center. It's related to Camino Square. This was the big-picture view I presented last month, showing the economic drivers and the infrastructure that bring people into and through this intersection. I then presented this close-up view of the only way for people to move between Camino Phase Two and area below it was through this six-foot pedestrian sidewalk with crazy Ivan turns in it and dangerous crosswalks. I fell out of my chair when I saw the easement and the proffer to address the crosswalk. No injuries were sustained, so thank you for listening. This is the vision of what I believe for us as a city to make this area successful for however these properties develop. And Mr. Solhany, as you put your fingerprints on the organization, I wanted to ask you to look at our open mobility director position and make sure that whoever comes in to fill that is in the organization in a way where the great ideas from our staff for mobility can make their way into the conversations that happen as these projects come forward. Because I'm getting tired of doing all these things. So if you, we could pin that in a comp plan or something, that would be great. With regard to the government campus, we're facing a similar situation, in my opinion. This is the big-picture view with it surrounded by economic drivers. This is existing infrastructure that we have or in progress or has been proposed by the Bike Board. I hope that those projects will be someplace so that when these areas are developed, they will be factored into what's proposed. What has come out of all of the iterations from Tara Frisbee is this baby of a gem. The red dotted lines represent an excellent analysis of pedestrian bikeway moving through the government center in something other than a car. More importantly, if we look at it as our city, we need to do the additional red dots, red parts, in order to bring, connect our government center outward to the rest of our community, especially those to the west who typically won't go past the railroads. In doing so, you end up with this beautiful corridor all the way out to Meisner Boulevard, where we have our new protected intersection. So that's the baby.
Mr. Wilson, your time has expired.
Yes.
There's another meeting right after this.
Yeah, I'm done. I made it.
Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. It is still, that's all the cards I have. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come up to the microphone.
My name is Judy Morrow, 1305 Northeast 5th Avenue. I have not been sworn in.
Thank you.
So swear me in.
Do you swear affirm that any testimony you may give before this public hearing will be truthful and accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Today, why is the lawyer for a developer asking for a guarantee? We, the residents, and the city council should be asking for guarantees when anybody builds anything in Boca Raton. And in Boca Raton, according to the real estate sites on Google AI, Boca Raton shows around 1,916 to 2,035 rentals. And I have a friend that always has to rent a house, and they just rented another house, and it was $200 less because there's so many on the market. The other thing is restaurants. Boca Raton has 1,129 restaurants. 600 of these restaurants are full-service. 500 are in central Boca, 300 are in east Boca, 329 in west Boca. Of these 1,129 restaurants in Boca Raton, 600 are full-service. 200 are fast food. 150 are coffee and cafe shops. 100 are bars. 50 are food trucks and street vendors. 29 are pop-ups that I guess go to the parks and whatever and pop up. But I'm also here today wearing what my daughter says is too much of a color to the meeting, and today, when I was riding my bicycle to play tennis, because of what happened last week riding my bike to tennis, I almost got hit by two cars last week. So today, over my tennis outfit, I wore this shirt, and I said, "I'm almost afraid to ride my bicycle, and I live less than two miles from Boca Raton Tennis Center that we love and is a beautiful tennis center. And by the way, y'all keep talking about money. If you want Boca Raton Tennis Center to make the city money, we have 10 clay courts that are north and south. Please add six more so we have 16, so we can make money like swimming, racket, and patch reef." And thank you very much, and traffic is terrible.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow. Thank you. It's Ms. Pashke.
I have a presentation. There we go. And this, what do I do here? Do I just press the middle button? Advance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please state your name and address and confirm that you've been sworn in.
I'm Pam Pashke, 341 Southwest 2nd Street, and I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
This is a case of two very wealthy corporations taking advantage of loopholes in the city rules. Kimco, now a huge corporation specializing in open-air shopping centers with grocery stores, acquired this property in 1966, not 1984, from Martin Kimmel and built the Wynn Dixie Shopping Center. Kimco is responsible for the blighted pictures Ms. Zacharitis showed. In 2015, they leased the planned Fitzgerald to a subsidiary of Florida Crystals, a $4 billion conglomerate of Fan Hool Sugar Barons, whose stated expertise is in luxurious, multifamily resort-style communities. When the CRA was formed in 1982, included these two shopping centers in the red area in the southern portion of the city. But Kimco knew by the early 2010s of the new height limits in the city that had been approved for downtown, and with Florida Crystals, saw more money could be made from eight-story apartment complexes than a shopping center. They figured out a way to avoid mixed use on Phase One by promising a retail shopping center for Phase Two, and then they switched it from a three-story, open-air shopping center to a land-swallowing residential complex with a seven-story parking garage. Lovely. Paperwork submitted claims this fits into the community. Eight-story buildings on Southwest 3rd Avenue overshadowing 7th Street do not fit in with the area by any stretch of the imagination. Nothing in this area rises above these three stories except the Fitzgerald. And that includes the nearby businesses on Camino Center Gardens, Business Center on Camino Gardens Boulevard. I wouldn't want this in my backyard. These are residential units with low-income people. But Kimco is not even good steward of their undeveloped land now. There is discarded garbage all along 3rd Avenue, south of 8th Street, and well into the parcel south side. More Kimco blight. Is this caring about the community? A few years ago, a high-rise building was proposed on East Boca Raton Road, and the nearby single-family residents complained, and they got what is a very beautiful building across the street. This is the Pocket Park. It's a drainage ditch, and I'm glad to hear that it's going to be revised, but they will still need the drainage, so I'm not sure what exactly they can really do to make this into a real park. This is the entrance to the proposed strip park behind the north building. Anyone entering here will have to walk by these three electrical equipment boxes that have requirements with nothing to be any closer than three feet on any side and eight feet on the south side, which is where people and the proposed walkway go by. This is, I think that that particular park will be used for dog-walking and pooping. This is their doggy and poop-and-play park behind the south building. It's artificial turf, and this is the drainage ditch behind the north building that certainly is also not a walkway.
Ms. Pashke, thank you so much. Your time has expired. Thank you.
I hope you will reject this request.
Thank you.
And ask them to go and talk to the actual community who lives there that got no say in this.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Unjin. Welcome.
Jonathan Unjin, 6501 Congress Avenue.
Mr. Unjin, since you're new here...
I was not sworn in. Thank you. Yes.
Please raise your hand. Do you swear affirm that any testimony you may give before this public hearing will be truthful and accurate?
I do.
Thank you.
Jonathan Unjin, 6501 Congress Avenue. My only point on this is I still think the gas station should have been acquired. Retail should have been there, that the city should have advocated and said that we can, I think the community would be a lot more behind it. That's my only point necessarily on this. To Mr. Pearlman's point earlier on the ex parte and also the questioning of witnesses or the presenter, I do think he's got a point there. I think shielding behind an attorney slash lobbyist as to not having to answer questions to keep less and less on the record necessarily isn't about transparency for the community. So I do think that a person who's presenting on behalf of a project should have to answer to the things that they say. I think that's all about transparency, and I don't think it's right. It limits the record, and the presenter, the project should have to, not saying necessarily in this case, but if that is a standard, it should change, because she's presenting on behalf of this, not necessarily as an attorney. She's presenting this project on their behalf, and that should be open to discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you. That's it? Okay, seeing no one.
Joseph Podolski, 17309 Belbo Point Way. I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
I can't believe this project was described to you as "as of right." On October 14th, 2025, staff recommended giving the applicant the right of a change of use from 37,000 square feet of retail to 394 apartments and 8,600 square feet of retail on 4.54 acres, the largest piece of raw land in downtown Boca. The site plan contains 793 structured parking spaces with zero surface parking. The applicant presented a letter concluding, quote, "The property is not suitable for retail operations." And applicant's representative gave testimony saying, quote, "There's no marketability for retail at this location." And a 37,000-square-foot shopping center is, quote, "suburban." It is not downtown. Nobody on staff or on the dais made mention to the fact that the applicant shows site-plan apartments on their website and is not even marketing the project for retail. Nobody questioned why the applicant is agreeing to construct over 20,000 square feet of retail with no surface parking. Even some of the students at Boca Raton... Even some of the students at Boca Raton Elementary could probably tell you that the land entitled for 374 apartments with 23,000 square feet of retail is a lot more valuable than land entitled for 37,000 square feet of retail. So why are the parties involved acting in a way that is equivalent to pulling the wool over the public's eyes? And why is our city not insisting on a truly special 37,000-square-foot infill retail gathering spot, merchandised with daily needs, that is completely void in Boca? The fee owner has already demonstrated a willingness to sell via contract with a residential developer. There are retail developers who will purchase this land and develop the project that was approved. The applicant's representative knows that I am a retail placemaker who lives in Boca. There's been no outreach. The applicant represented that they were in negotiations with one retailer for the entire site, not retailers for two buildings as planned. Retailers need convenient surface parking in our market to thrive. This project is surrounded by successful retail with surface parking. Camino Real Plaza, Camino Real Shops, et cetera. You have one of the most coveted chefs in all of South Florida, Reno Serbone, owner of Heritage in Fort Lauderdale, and Pizza Time right across the street. The businesses and residents of Boca clearly gravitate towards surface parking. The good people of Boca deserve the equivalent of an industry alley, best-in-class coffee, barbershop, tacos, floral shop, fitness salon, or the Nora Project, dynamic, single-story retail that was just built in West Palm on a site with way less favorable characteristics than this one. If you grant this change in use, you are not only walking away from the opportunity to do something special with retail that resonates with the people. I'm talking about Maman, Tate Bakery, Sesame Bakery, which is a Motec sister concept, Jet Set Pilates, Celestine Juice, Sun Life Organics, Landzettas, Barcelona Wine Bar, Park Tavern, Omakai Sushi. You are turning your backs on the small businesses and champions of community you claim to advocate for. The Vinnie Cafes, the Maine Coffees, the New York Primes, the Flamingo Houses, the Beauty Gardens. Stand on business, take responsibility, follow through on commitments, and stand up for your boundaries and values. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Very good. Seeing no one. Now, we will have an opportunity for participants in the public hearing to cross-examine anyone who provided testimony. Cross-examination is a chance to ask a witness questions about the testimony or evidence produced. The CRA rules provide up to three minutes for cross-examination. Questions must deal only with that witness said or submitted. This is not the time to bring up topics unrelated to what that witness's evidences. The applicant's attorney in the matter before us is not a witness, and her statements are not considered evidence into the record, so the attorney cannot be cross-examined. Cross-examination is not a chance, a second chance for public comment. It's not the time for speeches, arguments, and personal opinions. Please keep your remarks in the form of questions only related to new testimony given at today's hearing, since this is a continuation.
At the last meeting, we were allowed to request, ask Ms. Zacharias questions. Why is that different today?
It has been clarified for me that she is not a witness in this matter.
That doesn't make any sense to me because she provided testimony about what the project is. So can we, can we question city staff?
You can ask a question of the city staff related to the testimony they gave today.
You said this is a continuation of the hearing, so why couldn't it cover something from last time? Sorry, I'm just asking for clarification.
If you want to answer her question, I had a question, so, but she, she got first. This is a continuation...
Her question was, it was continuation, why not?
This is a continuation of the last hearing? We've already had a chance of cross-examination at the last hearing.
Yeah, and I cross-examined Mrs. Zacharias because you allowed me to.
I've been informed that the applicant's attorney is not a witness and not subject to cross-examination.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I actually would like to discuss with the city attorney. Could you elaborate on this? And if, if Ms. Zacharias is not deemed to be giving testimony, what weight can we place on her? How do we accord that with what she spoke about earlier?
Very good.
Sure. In a quasi-judicial hearing, you have argument and then you have evidence. I think that the board is always able to listen to what an applicant's attorney says. An applicant's attorney is presenting the evidence as presented in the agenda, the package considered with the testimony of staff. You frequently have a lot of technical data that goes along with your package, and that's not covered in five minutes or 10 minutes or 20 minutes. So all that record is before the board. When this body is making a decision, it's relying on what's called competent substantial evidence. And so, you're looking to those issues in the record that support or don't support whatever the decision that the board makes. I think, again, an applicant's attorney could subject herself to cross-examination if she wished to. But in my opinion is that an applicant's attorney is not presenting evidence upon which we're relying. It's argument, it's persuasion, which is appropriate.
Persuasion is lobbying.
One second, please.
Mr. Kahler, hypothetically, a... hypothetically, I don't know if it came up now, but an attorney, I think there are circumstances where an attorney could be presenting something that's in the nature of factual evidence. For example, a proffer on behalf of the applicant. I didn't hear one here that was not already contained in the record. I'm trying to, I recall instances where we did attorneys cross-examining, but I don't recall seven or eight years later whether it was more factual or argument-based. If Ms. Zacharias would be so kind perhaps to entertain questions, I think that might obviate the concerns today. But those are my thoughts.
Ms. Pashke, why don't you ask your questions of the staff related to the evidence that's submitted?
Okay. Thank you. The claim of not being able to find quality tenants, did the city staff request proof that, of contact, of why they couldn't find someone who they contacted who refused and why they refused? Was it had anything to do with visibility? Or was it too much, was it the rundown site they were trying to sell or to propose? Or was it the cost they were asking for? Did, did they present any documents that documented that they actually did this, other than that letter, which had no dates or any information?
We did not ask them to, to produce proof that they've reached out to this tenant or that tenant. It's not really our role to get in the middle of private transactions in that way. And we went into detail in the staff report that, you know, we simply said that the claim of not being a viable site for large-scale retail, we said that was a plausible claim, but we specifically said that we're not in a position to judge that claim. So I want to make that clear. But no, we did not ask them to tell us specific information about what potential tenants they reached out to and what the responses were and why. No. Thank you.
Okay. Then, in regard to the visibility, are you, was city staff aware that it was Kimco that built this project back in 1965?
Yes.
There was a, a comment in the documents that there was a meeting held in March with the community. I'm wondering who held that meeting and how did the notice get to the residents that this meeting was being held? They said there were only six people there.
So, the city code does not include any requirement to hold community meetings, but we always suggest to applicants that they do so. But they do that on their own, and they report to us when the meeting was held, what happened, what was said, and so on. And we say that, you know, consistently in our staff reports, that this is what the applicant told us. So that's, we're simply reporting what we were told. So I would hope that the applicant will address in more detail what the, you know, notice and the substance of that meeting was.
Do you know who was at the meeting?
I could probably look it up, but I don't know off the top of my head. Probably the applicant does.
Are you aware that Kimco on their website says they started their business on a handshake and that this proposal changes an agreement they already had with the city?
The first part of the question was, are you aware of their website? I've never been to their website, so no, I'm not. The second part of the question was, can you please ask it again, clarify?
Well, it had to do with this, that Kimco said they started their business on a handshake and that they have now come back on an agreement that they had and asked to totally change it. So I'm just asking if that, how that fit in with, with their, you know, your understanding of their company? So I guess you answered...
I know very little about the company, other than they own a lot of commercial shopping centers, and I, I see their signs around.
And they're publicly traded.
Yes.
I used to get mail, so this has to do with public notice, which, can I go ahead and ask? Okay. I used to get mail from the city when something in my neighborhood was going in for some kind of a change. My husband and I recall that we did get a notice back when this original project was being proposed. We got nothing in regard to this, and I'm asking, does the city still send notices? Because nobody on Seventh Street was aware of anything going on.
Yes, so the public hearings are noticed, including by mail to all property owners within 500 feet of the project site. And those are, the mailings are based on the addresses in the property appraiser, the county property appraiser database.
So the residents don't get notified because that's all rental on Seventh Street? Well, except for the condo.
Yeah, that, that is what the code requires, is mailing to property owners.
Seems disingenuous to me. These are really low-income people that live there.
Thank you, Ms. Pashke. Your time's expired.
This is ridiculous.
Anyone else wishing to cross-examine?
Richard Warner, 1322 Southwest Ninth Terrace. Very briefly, so I'm just looking for a little clarification. So you have no idea whether everything they've told you is a lie? You don't verify? You just accept what applicants are telling you? For example, about traffic or any of the things you've just discussed?
Mr. Warner, the cross-examination today is limited to new testimony regarding the things we talked about today, not the general process of...
Well, this was in relation to what was just said. The gentleman said, "It's not our job." Whose job is it to determine if it's not his? I'm just trying to clarify. They don't, he does not verify anything?
Very well.
So all of the application's submittal is reviewed in detail, information is verified, and it's reviewed by our experts. For example, a detailed traffic study is submitted, it's reviewed by our, the city's traffic engineers, comments are made. It's the same for all of their submittal. Now, what we're doing in reviewing an application is taking the ordinance that applies and reviewing the project against that ordinance. Whether or not, you know, retail is viable or whether the applicant has attempted to get tenants simply is not part of the review process. It's not in the ordinance, and it's not something that staff is required to or would be appropriate for us to be investigating.
So you basically don't go out of the envelope? Your, your job is to weigh applications against the ordinance and nothing more? Is that, would that be accurate?
When it comes to reviewing projects, yes. That being said, I mean, we certainly make suggestions, we certainly, I would say, go outside of the box, as you might say. But when it comes to requirements or whether the application meets the requirements of the ordinance for approval and what goes into our recommendation, we cannot go out of the box. That is what we're required to do.
And in the end, it falls to the council to decide whether it's appropriate based on overall, as opposed to just the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if I can answer, no, it's also about the ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Pearlman?
How many required parking spaces were required for this project based on the residential units?
793.
If I could clarify the question. You said for the residential units specifically.
Yeah. Okay. 793. How many, how many...
No, I'm sorry, that's the total. That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah. How many were required for residential for this project? And how many were provided for the retail and restaurants?
So, the required parking for this project is figured based on what is called shared parking. And that is in the ordinance. And essentially, what shared parking means is that there is a differing level of demand for different uses in different times of the day, right? So, in the, in a weekday, much of the residential will not be occupied, and, you know, certain uses will be more occupied. So there's specific standards that are applied to those. And basically, what that ends up with is a peak demand of 793, I believe it is, whatever that is. But there's a specific methodology that is followed, and they have followed it, and that is what...
Okay. Given, given that there are restaurants here that will be operating in the evening, and residents will likely be parking their cars in the evening there, has staff considered that there, how that will factor in and whether people will be walking across the railroad tracks to frequent the restaurants?
The parking demand at different times of the day, taking into account, again, you know, when people are at different uses, that's all been factored into the parking. I don't really understand the part about the walking across the tracks, if you can maybe clarify that.
Yeah, I'm asking because of the killer trains, Bright Line. Okay, so, my, my next question is, has, given that there will be retail, specifically many restaurants there, and this is in the downtown and the intention is to foster a downtown dynamic, has the applicant proposed any, to make any safety additions or modifications to the pathways accessing this, these retail locations? In terms of, you know, the passage of railroads, et cetera?
The applicant mentioned that they made a number of improvements to Camino Real during the Phase One construction, and those included some that crossed the tracks. I don't believe there are anything additional that's proposed in this phase, if anybody...
Okay. That's unfortunate, given the large amount of restaurants and retail. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pearlman. Anyone else? Mr. Leibelson?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I don't recall a hearing in, in 11 and a half years plus, I've been attending meetings for longer, 13 years, where we ever had cross-examination of staff based of this nature. I can recall one instance where we had a staff testifying as to factual matters, which they were testifying. And I would think that that would be the better practice. I would also think, before we have staff being questioned again on things not really the subject of their testimony, that we would sooner have the applicant's representative testify. The other challenge is, I recall instances where we did have an applicant testify, cross-examination, the applicant's attorney then interposed objections, which we had to dispose of. I recall ruling on some when I was a chair of a meeting. This is unusual. Who, who, who would be objecting? We're hearing facts, not an evidence. We're hearing questions that wouldn't be sustainable. It's creating a very messy record. I would suggest that we confine questions to actual matters and that staff not be required to respond to things if they haven't testified them. And I, and I think we ought to revisit this procedure because today, we're getting further down the path where I think simple questions that I will ask the applicant could have been answered directly.
I don't disagree. This is the procedure that was explained to me by the city attorneys. I believe that this, same thing that the cross-examination procedure here is slightly flawed. I have asked the people who are coming to cross-examine to limit just to new testimony as well. And again, I ask the speaker to limit it to just cross-examination of evidence presented today. Mr. Leibelson?
Mike Leibelson, 398 Northeast Third Court. I have two quick questions. One, is, has Ms. Zacharias, Kimco the corporate entity, or any employees or affiliates of Kimco made campaign contributions to members of this council? That's number one.
That is not part of the record.
Okay. Number two is, is Ms. Zacharias a registered lobbyist with the state?
That is not part of the record. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Judy Morrow, 1305 Northeast Fifth Avenue. I'd like to know if the mayor and the four council people, what year did the rule go from four stories high in Boca Raton to 10 stories?
Ms. Morrow, thank you very much. That is not part of the record. That is not a question today. Thank you. That's a different matter. This is not for public comment.
This is not for public comment. Thank you. Seeing no one further, we'll give the applicant a chance for rebuttal.
Rebuttal's not much, you wasn't asking a question.
Hi, I don't have much of a rebuttal, but thank you for hearing our presentation. A couple of things to note. The downtown has always been at this height since the late 80s, I believe, 1989. The height of the downtown has not changed. There was an IDG approved, adopted subsequent to Ordinance 4035, but that is not at purview here, because the IDG is not, we're not availing ourselves of the IDG ordinance. That ordinance, Judy, did allow to go from 100 feet to 140 feet in certain locations. But again, we are not availing ourselves of that. That has been the height, 100 feet has been the height in the downtown since the late Is there a question anybody on council would like to ask me?
I have some. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Zacharias, are you a registered lobbyist on behalf of anyone in connection of this project?
Yes, I am a registered lobbyist, not with the state. It's, the requirement is with the county. I am a registered lobbyist for both FCI, which is my paying client, but for safety precautions, we also registered Kimco as well.
And with whom did you register?
With the county, with Palm Beach County.
All right, thank you. Can you describe a little bit more about the attendees at the community meeting that was held?
Sure, good question. We, as Mr. Shad noted, community meetings are not required in the city of Boca. I think, I would hope, most of you know that I make that a policy for me, to hold community meetings. I think community meetings are very important. But again, despite them not being required, we follow the same criteria that the city file follows when they send out notices. So we go to Palm Beach County Property Appraiser, we request labels and addresses and names for all properties within 500 feet. I do hear, I forgot the nice lady's name, I do hear the frustration when there's renters instead of owners. We don't really have control of that. We send to the property owner the notices. Six people showed up to the community meeting.
Thank you, and I believe you and I discussed the, there's a letter in the record. Can you talk a little bit more about that? That Kimco, what Kimco discussed in terms of its ability, its efforts to lease this property over many years?
Sure, good question, thank you. First, let me start by saying, it wasn't Kimco that created blight, it was the inability to fill the space that created abandoned black boxes. Kimco is, as I've stated before, and I will state again, the largest open-air retailer in all of North America. They did not want, and I'm going to repeat it, they did not want to give up control of any portion of this nine and 1/2 acres. Before they ever spoke with Florida Cristals, they made best efforts, used significant diligence to try to fill the space themselves. Unfortunately, that didn't, none of those attempts came to fruition. Kimco thought it would be ideal if potentially they could do a long-term lease on the eastern half, and have what I like to call a captive audience for what was going to hopefully be retail on the western half. They spent many years, we've had CO, and we are actually 98% occupied, so clearly there is a need for residential on Phase 1. They were hoping, once Phase 1 was open and operating, they would have an easier time securing a retail tenant, tenants, it doesn't have to be a major retailer, it could be multiple small retailers for the west side. They were unable to do so. And again, they are the largest open-air commercial retailer in all of North America. That is when they went back to Florida Cristals and said, "We have been unable to lease any space," or "have any bites," let's call it. I am not surprised if, again, you think about the visibility as all of you drive our beautiful downtown, or ride your bikes, or walk. It is not sight that you can see from really anywhere, unfortunately. But then you have the Fresh Market, which is right on Camino Real, and that CVS has been gone, and they've been unable to lease that. It's got to be maybe four years now. It is a huge space in the Fresh Market Shopping Center with phenomenal visibility, and they've been unable to lease it. So to think that we are lying, or Kimco wanted to give up this property, that is literally the antithesis of their business model.
The applicant's original proposal had fewer square feet. You've increased the square footage of retail in response to discussion at the last meeting, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Knuckles?
Thank you, Ms. Zacharias. Can you just touch on the parking for the retail?
Sure, so, I did a quick math, but I left it there. So in the city of Boca, you can have shared parking, and as Mr. Shad noted, the reason you have shared parking is because you have non-concurrent uses. But then there is concurrent uses, so you have to park by the maximum peak at any given time. So for the residential, it's 1 point, the code requires 1.75 parking spaces per unit. That requirement, Mr. Pearlman, is irrespective of the size of the unit, either square footage or by bedroom count. So it's 1.75 parking spaces per unit. And then the retail is, retail is, a restaurant is parked at one parking space for every 38.9 square feet of customer service area, which is a very important distinction. It's not gross, it's customer service area. So rule of thumb, if you have a 5,000-square-foot restaurant bay, approximately 2,500 of that will be customer service area. So you don't have to park the back of the house. As I stated earlier, you also don't have to park up to 25% of the inside customer service area for the outside dining. So there is a lot of moving parts here. The parking analysis has been provided by JMD Engineering, and was carefully reviewed by both planning and the traffic department at the city.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything else? Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. So with that, we'll close the public hearing, and ask for a motion in a second to adopt DDTRI IDA Number CRP 1602 R2.
So moved.
I'll second.
Here a second, here a second. Okay, discussion. I'd like to begin. Anyone? Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, go.
I think the applicant has done a good job to try to respond to changing market conditions, and they've responded to concerns raised by this council about a lack of retail. In fact, they said that they're, you know, they're putting in more retail than they would ideally want to respond to the ability to serve the neighborhood. And, you know, again, going back to 2019, this is the first applicant in the history of the city to dedicate $3 million in off-site road improvements when we did not want to go with their original proposal. They came back and pivoted, they've now pivoted again to try to respond to needs, or, you know, concerns raised by council members. Thank you.
Kim. Mr. Drucker.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to the applicant, thank you staff for the information. So when we last met here on October 14th, there was issues with the project, that's why we defer to today. I appreciate you taking the time to go back and listening to the demands that we had, and I agree with Mayor Singer on the market demand. Again, this is a downtown, this is a CRA, it's an area for vibrancy. Sorry, Mr. Warner, cover your ears. An area for energies, and for walkability and mobility. Mr. Wilson, thank you so much for taking so much time to always help us understand, improve, provide constructive criticism on how we can make our cities and our residents safer. Also, affordable housing is important, and I know in the last project, Phase 1, there's a component of affordable housing in that, in those buildings, and I know that we did not discuss that today, but that was also discussed the last time. So anytime you could bring affordable housing, it complements the surrounding area, and I think Ms. Pashke made several comments about low-income housing in that area. So I think that's also going to provide some, you know, relief to some of the environment that we need more affordable housing. Density intensity, it's a CRA. Again, I understand that people get frustrated, but again, a downtown, density and intensity. Mr. Pearlman, I'm not sure why you kept saying the Bright Line, there's no Bright Line station there, there's no Bright Line. The Bright Line is not on Camino Real, the Bright Line is by our City Center, so I'm not sure, I just want to make sure for those listening to this meeting or watching, that there's no confusion. In terms of the pocket park, I am sure we will work, I've seen many, many pocket parks, larger, smaller, with great drainage, and obviously, the community, some people said community don't have feedback. Not only did the applicant have community feedback, but these meetings that we're having, and all of you coming up to the podium, is public feedback, and you've had opportunities in the last meeting and today. And for those reasons, I will be supporting the project today.
Thank you. Ms. Knuckles, or Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Chair Wigder. So, yeah, so, Ms. Lester, you said when, when we tabled this last time, or came, decided to come back this time, that we asked for an increase of retail. We did, but I also asked for the decrease to the residential. So they did decrease the residential from what was originally offered in this, in this new Phase 2, and this has been a tough decision. I mean, I've really thought about this, and I go by the area a lot, and, and I met on site, I did, which I disclosed. I think it's important, I've ridden that area on my bike, and, and I do also thank Mr. Wilson for the presentations, and for bringing up great ideas. One of the issues that I had last time was, does it, does it help us achieve our downtown, our goals for the downtown, our downtown plan? And one of those goals is pedestrianism. And I think this time, when they've come back, with the proffering of the $15,000 to be applied towards the RFBs, the two-foot-wide easement along Camino Real, that helps the pedestrianism become better in the downtown. And I think having something vibrant there, more retail, hopefully some vibrant restaurants, something that neighbors can walk to, and not, not all fancy different restaurants, but something that's very neighborhood feel. I think that will be good for the residents, I think it will be good for the neighborhood. And as it was stated in July of 18, with what was approved, with the 37,000 square feet of retail, now, in 2025, we have 880 less trips than what was previously approved. So I know it's still a lot of trips, I know it's still, traffic is an issue in that area. Mr. Wigder, I really hope that we do, as a CRA, come together to figure out improvements to that area, they need to be done. They've been put off, it is confusing when you're driving, when you're riding a bike, when you're crossing the road, even in Mr. Wilson's presentation, just trimming the, trimming the tree that's in front of, that's in front of the pedestrian sign. We need to take care of things like that. But with the changes that have been done, and, and what has been proffered, I plan on supporting this today as well.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Sure, let's, let's take a stroll down memory lane, if we could, and talk a little back row. So it was the late 80s, early 90s that there was an effort in place to revitalize the downtown, and that was when Ordinance Number 4035 was adopted, that granted development rights to private property owners in the downtown, and that Ordinance 4035 was approved by the voters in the early 90s. And the way that this process would work is that if an application met the ordinance, met the criteria outlined in the ordinance, then the application was due to be granted. Otherwise, a denial when the criteria were met, kind of gets into the realm of denying property rights to private property owners. And though I know the city attorney's probably about to twitch, that potentially gets into the world of a taking, and could be unconstitutional if something like that were to happen. Here, the city's experts have concluded that this application meets the criteria, and I'm not in a position to dispute that based on the evidence we've seen. Now, Mr. Warner did mention before his view that the criteria that are outlined in Ordinance 4035 are inadequate, or flawed, or something to that effect, right? And that's a perfectly valid opinion, a perfectly valid opinion. But for purposes of our decision-making, those criteria are the ones that are in place right now, and govern the private property rights that, are the ones that apply to the, this property, to any of the other private property owners in the, in the downtown, and the ones that were put in place by the voters in the, in the early 1990s. So in that way, we have to make decisions based on what the law is, and in my view, the law has been satisfied here as to what the criteria are, what this application has proposed, and so likewise, it sounds like with my colleagues, I plan on, on supporting this.
Thank you very much. That's very well said. I agree with those sentiments. You know, there's a lot of discussion about the gas station, the gas station nearby, and that, oh, that it should become part of this project, or something like that. But those private property rights apply to the gas station owner just as much as they apply to this owner. We cannot force him to sell his property to the current developer, although it would be nice to include it and make one large grand thing. I think that the changes to the project, though not perfect, are certainly meaningful, and the near 200% increase of commercial space and retail space is what we've asked for, to create a true mixed-use area. The re, you know, the adaptation of having retail be on Third Avenue, as opposed to just resident amenities, also makes it meaningful. And of course, the courtyard, to have an opportunity to have dining, and to have, you know, connectability there, creates, creates the opportunity for a real gathering place, which is, I think, what we're trying to do, is create gathering places, not just people going back to their apartments. So I think that's certainly an issue there. How we do these things collectively in terms of mobility, and that some things are proffered by the developer in terms of the reflected light beacons, and I saw, Ms. Knuckles, that they, they did trim the bush there, that was getting, you know, out of, you know, getting unruly over there recently. You know, how we kind of coordinate with the CRA, right? There's an opportunity for us to, alongside the developer, which is one of the reasons why I had the discussions with Mr. Sohaney and Mr. Camejo, about allocating some of the resources that are already budgeted and allocated and appropriated to the downtown walkability project, and to the CRI road and sidewalk projects, to allocate towards improving that sector, to improving that crosswalk, you know, along somewhat the lines of Mr. Wilson's suggestion. And that's the idea that we're kind of, where I think we're doing the right thing, which is absolutely the CRA working in tandem with developers to improve that community, to improve that area. So we see a lot of positives there, and there could be certainly community uses there, walkability, bikability, and the additional two feet to create the shared-use trail, again, just creates more opportunities for that. What I'm hopeful for here, when we're creating a crosswalk, it's not a crosswalk to nowhere. The crosswalk to Fresh Market, and as Ms. Zacharias said, to the, to the 10,000-foot CVS, that remains vacant, again, is a vestige of the suburban, you know, parking lots and suburban models there, that, that are not being embraced by the retail community, or the small business community. And so, you know, hopefully, this will create, you know, some ideas on that side of the street to also improve the area, to make it more walkable, or to make it more village-like. And I think this project, though not perfect, you know, we say this often, we can't let, you know, the strive for perfection be the enemy of the good, you know? This does a really good job of doing that. The shared-use parking analysis, and the creating a mixture of uses will reduce traffic, as we said. So for those reasons, I do support the changes to the project. Nothing, yes?
Can I ask one more question? Do we know what the status is of the public art that was supposed to be in the pocket park since Phase 1?
I don't know. I don't know, Mr. ... Well, now, they're going to be redesigning the public, they're going to be redesigning the pocket park, so I would guess along lines with that, Mr. Shad, there would have to be, there would be a discussion of that as well.
I think I know the answer, is that the applicant has made the monetary contribution, and now it's up to the city? I believe that's the answer. Does anybody know differently? Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you. So, there being nothing further, Ms. Seddon's.
Wigder?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll move on to public requests, and so now we will reopen the Florida public requests. Anyone wishing to state an opinion about the CRA or the downtown will have up to three minutes.
CRA or the downtown will have up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Perlman.
Jim Ostrowski was walking to meet his wife at a local gym when a Brightline train fatally struck him near the intersection of Southwest 18th Street and South Dixie Highway in Boca Raton, which is very close to-
Excuse me.
Yes.
Sorry, we're getting wild gesticulation from the-
Okay.
Oh.
So.
Pardon me. You okay?
Should I start again?
Just keep going.
Keep going.
Thank you.
It wasn't on. Can I have my, can we start?
Sure.
Yeah. All right. Jim Ostrowski was walking to meet his wife at a local gym when a Brightline train fatally struck him near the intersection of Southwest 18th Street and South Dixie Highway, very close to this project that we just spoke about. And that occurred on October 25, 2022. Ostrowski was, is a 74-year-old retired, he was a 74-year-old retired executive and a longtime Boca resident. He was crossing a designated quiet zone, what they call a quiet zone, when he was struck. And a quiet zone on a train track and pertaining to the Brightline is a section where the train horns are not, are, do not sound, and which often occurs during residential, where there's residential development. If people are sleeping, they designate it as a quiet zone. So Ms. Drucker, people aren't, aren't hit. Actually, the majority of the accidents and when people are hit don't occur where the stations are. They occur on stretches of track. And there's a lot, there's a stretch of track that runs adjacent to this proposed development, where they have a questionable amount of parking spaces for the type of activity, and very likely, people are going to be walking across the tracks at night. And this, given that there's a residential development right there, this is very likely going to be designated as a quiet zone. And it's going to pose a huge risk. And, and we know that there, there was a lawsuit. The Ostrowski family is suing Brightline right now, and they could even possibly sue the city as well with, you know, the, like I said, it could be a liability for the city, given if this project moves forward. By the way, I think everybody should listen to this podcast. It's the Killer Train, it's called Killer Train. It's a podcast, a joint podcast of WLRN and the Miami Herald. And the title is Killer Train, and it, it talks about Brightline and, and as the deadliest major passenger railway in the United States, which passes through our city. And Ms. Drucker, I have to say, I think that, you know, you, you always advocate for the Brightline and, you know, speak positively about them and almost like a publicist of some nature. But I think you, you aren't really informed about the facts of Brightline. On September 22, you stated that a lot of people unfortunately use the train for suicide. And I think, I suggest that you read the article, "A Death Train Is Haunting South Florida," which was in The Atlantic, a national publication, and it, and it exposes the Brightline as the deadliest major passenger railroad in the United States. And in that article, it clearly lays out that what you stated is not the case. And in fact, all 41 deaths last year were determined by authorities using facts of the scene to not be suicide. So as someone who's a publicist and proponent of the Brightline, I really suggest you begin to educate yourself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wigder, can I comment?
Well, first of all, let me just say, Mr. Perlman or any speaker, the comments are supposed to be made addressed to the chairperson, addressed to the chair, not to individual members here. This is a formal meeting. Thank you, Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Perlman, I am not a publicist, but I am a public safety advocate, and I pride myself with that. So please get your facts straight. You're quoting an article of which I have not read. So that is that article and that reporter's information. I do not work for Brightline. I'm an elected official for the City of Boca. But what I can tell you is that we, the city, I'm assuming Brightline as well, take a lot of extra care in making sure that our public is safe. And what I said in that meeting, and I could go, I will have to go back and listen, is that a lot of folks do use the rail to commit suicide. And a lot of the issues that we had on the Brightline are user, meaning people are either stuck on the Brightline, they get stuck, they go in front of it, they try to beat the train. I have seen that myself. So I am not a publicist for Brightline, and I do not advocate for Brightline. And yes, I am a Brightline user. I am an advocate for public safety, and I really pride myself with that. So please get your facts straight before you come up here and make accusations about me.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I too appreciate, have a seat, please, sir. I'm going to be a moment. I too appreciate facts. I'm not quite sure why this candidate for city council who runs a 501(c)(4) political organization keeps talking about Brightline, but there are misstatements of facts. First, suicides have happened. That is unfortunate. That is a record. Second, I encourage someone who only moved to this city a year ago or less, we're not sure, or I'm not sure, within the last few years, I think we can safely say, depending on how one measures residency, should understand the history of how quiet zones came to be enacted in Boca Raton in 2018. This is not a, will be a quiet zone. It is a quiet zone. But I'll quote from the Palm Beach Post article, which I was able to pull up during Mr. Perlman's comments, dated December 7, 2024, talking about this incident, quote, "According to a Boca Raton Police Department report, several witnesses stated that gatearms at the crossing were down when Ostrowski crossed. The train engineer, comma, according to the report, comma, attempted to get Ostrowski's attention by using the horn multiple times." I'll add, notwithstanding the quiet zone. However, Ostrowski, to continue, "However, Ostrowski, subquote, continued to look down while running across a railroad track, subquote, the engineer stated in the report, end quote." So if we're going to quote from articles, I think we should quote them all. But again, we're spending more time on individuals' concerns about Brightline and misstatements of the record. I'll use this as an opportunity. No one should cross the railroad tracks when the arms are down. No one should run across the tracks, drive across the tracks. And unfortunately, we've seen far too many deaths, all of which are preventable because people have done that. So if you're watching at home, understand when the safety arms are down, when the crossing arms are down, don't circumvent them. That's what we commented back up on September. We'll continue to comment, and I think it's incumbent upon us to get accurate information out there. Thank you, Mr. Wigder.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Also, since you're suing the PSA, if you happen to be in front of the Brightline or Tri-Rail, because we have two rails in the city, and the arms are down and they're taking really long, right next to every single rail, there's a blue sign, and it has a phone number with the specific number on there and the specific rail. You could call, and you could find out live data as to why the arms are down, why the arms are not coming up. Maybe there's an error, maybe there's a technical issue, and you can report it. So that blue sign that's right next to the rail, whether you're going, you know, west or you're going east, every rail has a blue sign, and it's the blue sign for that particular stop. So you can use that number for every single stop. Every rail has a specific blue sign with a number that you call and the rail number on it, and you could get accurate information about the rail.
Thank you. This is still public request, Mr. Warner. Thank you for your patience.
Mr. Warner, 1322 Southwest 9th Terrace.
Chair, is the microphone on?
Sir. At the- Better?
Much better. Thank you, sir.
Okay. You'll be gratified to know I'm not going to talk about Brightline. I use it. It's okay. People are crazy. They run across the tracks. The problem is, the tracks are there. It's the way things worked when the city was young and the train came first. What can you do? But it points up the $15,000 gadget that tells people when to walk. They don't pay any attention to them either. So that doesn't solve the problem at that intersection. I think the fact that the ordinance you're living with is 30 years old is a big problem. And maybe before you make a final decision on these projects that you're looking at, you should make a decision as to whether that ordinance needs to be changed. This city is nothing like this wonderful place it was 30 years ago. The supposedly revitalized, actually destroyed downtown is totally different. Property values are different. The population is different. I suggest the most important thing in front of you might be to reevaluate those criteria, which are clearly out of date. They don't fit. This project, if, in view of what we have going on now, I believe would be considered totally inappropriate. I think the campus project is even more inappropriate. But again, go back to that ordinance, and whatever needs to be done, perhaps it should be revisited. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Public requests, Ms. Pashke.
Pam Pashke, 341 Southwest 2nd Street. Mr. Wigder, our comments are supposed to be directed to you, correct?
Thank you.
Okay. So my first comment is about the lobbyist thing. I checked for Ms. Zacharides on the lobbyist list for the Palm Beach County. I didn't see it. So I would like the city to investigate that she truly is registered, because while her presence here at this hearing is, as her attorney, she is, when she is meeting with each one of you individually, she is being a lobbyist. So she does have to be registered, and she said she is, so maybe I spelled her name wrong or something. The second thing is regarding the strip park that I mentioned about walking by those electrical units, I am very concerned that this will become a place for, that the public cannot use because of the access, and that it may attract the homeless like the pocket park does. So I think that maybe some additional discussions with them should be taken out to concerning the pocket park, not the pocket park, the park behind the north building.
The linear park.
The linear park, yes.
Gotcha.
So my third thing, and the last thing, is I don't know if you are aware, I know that it has been stated that Kimco is the owner of record of this parcel, not Kimco, that K, wait, what is it? KRCX Delaware is the owner of this parcel on record, but in, on record, that's not actually cracked. The county shows Kimco, the original, the Kimco Corporation, as the party that owns this parcel. Now, Kimco Corporation changed their name to Kimco Delaware, Inc., officially with the state of Florida, so I think that's covered. But then, the Del, Kimco Delaware, Inc., filed to withdraw from conducting business in the state of Florida in 2023 at this, on May 1st. And on that same date, KR, whatever it is, KRCX Delaware, registered as a new LLC corporation, not connecting them to the previous corporation, which I believe should be required. They, on a document I found in the record, they claimed there was a merger, which there probably was, but they have not notified the state of Florida that they are the successor owner of this. They're, they're not leaning on division corporations. The companies are linked. These two are not linked. One is a corporate C corp, the other is an LLC, filing taxes as a C corp, apparently. So there is a problem, in my view, of the, of the notification to Palm Beach County as to who owns this parcel and why. And they also have not notified the state of their connection to these two subsidiaries, I assume of this REIT, Kimco Realty. So this concerns me that they're not doing-
Thank you, Ms. Pashke.
-tying the legal. I know you're a real estate guy, so-
Thank you.
You know better than I. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public requests? Mr. Unjin?
Go ahead, Dr.
Oh, Ms. Morrow, cut you off.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Not trying to. Okay. Judy Morrow, 1305 Northeast 5th Avenue. You're talking about the bill for, in the thing, 4035, that it has standards for the city of Boca. Okay. When I went around and personally talked to hundreds of people that live in the city of Boca, and a lot of people that come to Boca don't live in the city, but the ones that did, the number one thing they said they did not like in Boca was the Ever Development. And with this bill, or whatever it is, Charter and whatever, 4035, you can go right by the post office downtown, the condos right behind the post office, 155 Tower. So many people dislike that because according to 4035, it was supposed to be built on two acres. It was built on a one and a half acres. It is an eyesore. The people that live there, they have numerous lawsuits because the state of Florida building code was not followed. They used the wrong kind of building materials in the lawsuit. And now, you want to build another condo right next to it? When this condo that has 127 condos in it, it goes right up to the line. There is no room for the garbage truck to drive behind it. So what happened? Why didn't you use 4035? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Unjin?
Jonathan Unjin, 6501 Congress Avenue. So I'll save some of the city some time. I did just look at the lobbyist thing. Florida Crystals, Ellie's been registered since 2016 and never has withdrawn. But for Kimco, 10 days ago, she was registered. So just to let you, let you all know. Regarding Brightline, I think I know where Mr. Perlman's coming from. It's the same thing as what I can't stand is the favoritism that the city gives for the downtown and the great development versus this part of town that should have better development rights, that has four-lane roads in every direction and no traffic. It's an excuse for development, the Brightline. Is it in reality? So I think that's where Mr. Perlman's coming from. But the death train thing, from what I understand, a lot of it may be due to insurance, that if you're committing suicide, you're not going to get your life insurance. So people aren't going to exactly leave a note when they go running in front of a train. So, but that's just my, my two cents. Like I said, I understand this is a very difficult time for this council with everything that they're facing relating to development. But again, I, I just wish that we looked at this part of town that makes the most sense for increasing the tax base and, and creating the vibrant area that you can start from scratch with, where people aren't complaining about, you know, meeting after meeting, you know, the CRA, if there's a big development, this room is more full than it is today in the past. For every single development, it's just this little area is impacted, then they forget about it for a while. Then this little area, the downtown, is impacted by the next development, and they forget about it. But what brings, I think, everybody here in the activism is the government campus. And it was great to hear Mr. Wilson talk about how that can tie things together. And, you know, all I want is good development that makes sense. I've been preaching about the downtown and the, and the development rights. DDRI 2.0 is coming up. They're almost out of office equivalency. So your voice is important in this city. And, and, and all I can say as a person is stay engaged, and, and everybody's got a fair opportunity to hopefully be listened to by this council, whether ex parte disclosure or whatever it is. I know I've got it, you know, spoken to all of you leading up to it. Again, you know, I think that's important, but I think that you all should fight more up here as opposed to in the ex parte, because then people would see the advocates that you truly are to get the best development. I don't think a lot of the people see that or know that, where I've seen you battle with developers, but just, it's not up here to get what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. Buffy Tucker, 431 Northeast 10th Terrace. The revelation that Ms. Zacharides was just, just applied to be a lobbyist 10 days ago for this Kimco deal is very concerning to me. I think we need to look into that a little bit more. I, I don't understand all of that. And to me, it sounds like there might be some legal ramifications involved in that. So I hope we look into that just a little more. But beyond that, I do think some of the ordinances that we are governed by right now are outdated. I think you all on the dais are very intelligent- I think you all on the dais are very intelligent people. I think we have a very intelligent community as well. It's repeated over and over again how you all are working with the developers. At the end of the day, you represent all of us. We appreciate that, but we're not feeling entirely heard. I think it's concerning that developers and their representatives are allowed to come into this and say, let's build to the absolute parameters of what's allowed. I think just because something can be done doesn't mean it should be. I think we need to apply some common sense to all of this and maybe consider what's really appropriate for the city and the citizens. I don't think just because we can build 140 feet high, I don't think that means we should. I think every project needs to be considered on its own merit and its own qualities that it gives to the community. I just think all of those things need to be really considered and addressed. And please, please, please involve the community more. I think there need to be more parameters also around outreach. And, you know, everyone needs to be involved in this. We all live here together. We can work things out, but if we're not given the opportunity, it creates a very adversarial scenario. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the time for public comment. Let's make a couple just remarks. I appreciate my colleagues and Mr. Perlman's discussion on train safety. I am a person that grew up in the northeast and in the suburbs, nearly every single train crossing either has an underpass or an overpass. But again, the infrastructure was put in that way in the 1930s and 1940s. To Mr. Warner's point here, this, the commuter train was put in on top of the freight train after, as a later thought. So to the extent that we could ever consider, and we have looked at, and I can tell you in discussions with the staff and discussions with engineers, we have looked at opportunities to potentially do overpasses or pedestrian bridges over certain, over certain train tracks. Second Street is one of them, right? Because the idea is you do have a Bright Line train there and many people who do get off there will enjoy downtown or the Meisner Park. And the opportunity to get them across the street safely is one that we've explored. In fact, it's been in our budget for three years to look at a pedestrian crossing. And it's been continually in the downtown projects kind of schematics, specifications that we improve that section. So, you know, I do agree that it could be done safer. To the multiple points that talk about the 30-year-old ordinance and to Mr. Thompson's point that this is the law that we're dealing with, I don't disagree either. We are going to have to, pretty soon actually, reevaluate this ordinance. And to the extent that the downtown is, let's say, almost built out, and to Mr. Unjin's point that we should be looking north for further growth, those are worthwhile urban planning concepts. Right now, we are dealing with the ordinance that's in place, with the law that's in place. And we make our rulings based on those facts, based on the evidence, based on the staff's recommendations. As you know, since the last meeting here, the developer did make significant changes to this downtown project, and I was thankful for those changes. Is it perfect? No, it's not perfect. It's not going to be perfect, but it was much better than it was before and an opportunity to create a much more engaged mixed-use area. In terms of the legalese and those kinds of things, I'm not going to get into that in terms of, you know, discussing that. There is an application process. There is a submittal process. There is a corporations site. There is a domestication of corporations opportunities. The lawyers know that they have to do all those things and comply in order for the documents to be effective. Our legal department is looking at all of those things before the permits are issued and whatnot. And so is the bank. And so is the developer. And so are their attorneys. So those are things that I'm going to let the lawyers for the city do in terms of processing permits. It's important to bring it up to make sure that those things are checked on, but that is their responsibility in order to do so. And I trust the city attorney's office implicitly with looking at all the legal matters before we approve something. That being said, I think that's all I really have to say on all the public requests. I don't know, Mr. Sohany, if you had anything else on that.
No, I have nothing. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
No, very good. Okay. Well, there are no other, there's no other business to consider, nor there is any other settlements to consider. So we'll turn to the director's report. Mr. Sohany, maybe just during this time, if it's possible, that you and/or Mr. Camejo can talk a little bit more about the downtown projects we talked about, improving that sector, the downtown walkability project and the CRA road and sidewalk project to improve that corridor.
Sure, Mr. Chair. I'll let Mr. Camejo speak on the walk cross-section that was referenced in the Communino Phase Two project.
Thank you.
We have actually added that to our capital improvement forecast for the CRA. So the next time we give that update, we'll have, you know, specific detail on what that looks like and what our options are. But as you know, we're looking globally at this type of improvement, not just at that intersection or in that area, but throughout the downtown, including Palmetto Park Road, Second Street, and also north-south connections elsewhere. So we'll come back with a more comprehensive outlook on those specific details.
Thank you. And Mr. Camejo, if it's possible, in terms of the downtown walkability and safety, if you could look at that railroad crossing to assuage some of the public's concerns, I would appreciate that as well. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Sohany?
Nothing else, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you. Commissioners, Mr. Keeler, anything else?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners' reports, Mr. Thompson?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nocless?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tucker?
No report, thank you.
Mr. Singer?
I'll be brief, just for the last couple of speakers in response to some of those concerns. We hear you. I think that this particular project that was just voted on was nowhere near the maximum it could have been. For the bigger questions or some of the bigger issues, there are, I encourage people to continue, if they have questions, to reach out to staff, reach out to council members, reach out to me. We're hearing questions for the first time that staff is able to explain. Some people don't know. Some people want more information. Some people don't have it. We're happy to provide it. And I say this because I see a number of people have been coming recently. Welcome to you all. Thank you. This is not the only way, you know, we can have more dialogue. I'm seeing people who, in all my time here, I've looked for emails from you because I've wanted to respond to some of you. I don't have an email address from you. I've never gotten an email. So I have to wait to see you at this meeting or then if you walk out of the meeting afterwards, have to wait for you to come back in two weeks or send you snail mail. So we're available and staff is available too for questions. And I think it would help clarify some misinformation and questions that keep coming up or misinformation in the form of questions. So happy to get that accurate information out there. Appreciate people being part of our city. And I'll yield to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Do you have anything?
Mr. Chair, I have no report today.
Oh, thank you. No, listen, let me just say again, thank you, everyone, for the comments and for dealing with this hearing. There's some peculiarities here and thank you for dealing with me, working through it. I am not a perfect person and I'm trying to get better every day. And so if we can improve the process, I'm always happy to hear it. Likewise, everyone knows, I'm always happy to walk any street in the downtown, in the rest of the city, with anybody to talk about ways that we can improve it, make it better, make it safer. And I encourage you, let's do it. Let's have community walks where we just walk around and saying, hey, this is what we can do. I've had many, many walks with people and we've come up with real solutions. And the staff knows, I'm happy to text it right to them, right to Mr. Sohany to say, hey, what about this? To always look to improve it. So, you know, please keep that dialogue open. It should not be happening only here. This is the tip of the iceberg in terms of what we're able to do. This is really just trying to fix the legal business, finish the legal business that's going on. The real work has to happen out there. And I implore you, call us and let's have the conversations out there on the streets and walk around and try to make the city better. So with that being said, we will adjourn this meeting at 3:45 and reconvene shortly with a city workshop. So with, with that being said, we will adjourn this meeting at three forty-five and reconvene shortly with a city workshop.
Good afternoon and welcome to a workshop meeting of the Boca Raton City Council. It is Monday, November seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is now three fifty-nine. We have no proclamations or presentations today, nor do we have any board interviews. And we, the only agenda item we have is the campus partnership opportunity discussion. So I'm going to suggest we proceed right to that. Then if we have any of the public requests or review of regular agenda items, we can take that up. Given the attendees in this room, I think they'll want to comment on and get an update on the government campus partnership opportunity. So with that, I'll turn to you, Mr. Sohaney.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn it over to our deputy city manager, Mr. Lukasik, to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Sohaney. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as, as you all know, we've been working diligently over the summer to do a couple of things, predominantly to react to a lot of the comments that we've received as, as it relates to a lot of the public meetings that we've had and some of the outreach we've done. But also still bear all those comments in mind while we're working towards achieving that initial objective that you established, which was, you know, creating, creating that environment as an extension of the downtown where we have this walkable, active, connected area. So that, that, and that combined with some of the infrastructure improvements that you identified as part of that project as well. So Tara Frisbee has been engaging in a lot of listening activities. They've been making changes to their proposed plan. This, this presentation is really an opportunity to get you updated as to where Tara Frisbee is. So Rob Frisbee's here. He'll talk a little bit about the development program. We'll talk a little bit about some of the public infrastructure as well, some of the public investments associated with the, the municipal facilities and the park space. And we'll also talk about the revenues and expenditures that are associated with, oh, the revenues that are associated with the land lease and private development itself. But also talk a little bit about the expenditures associated with the public facilities budget. So CBRE representatives, Leanne Corse and Mike Mache are here to walk us through those conversations. But I'm going to go ahead and start just by walking through our timeline, timeline on the project to date, just to bring everybody up to speed. And then I'll ask Mr. Frisbee to come up in a, in a, in a moment. So Council, you'll, you'll recall that we received unsolicited proposals in late October, two thousand and twenty-four. And in response to the receipt of those unsolicited proposals for the transit-oriented development proposal and the campus redevelopment proposal that we had been talking about in strategic planning and other public meetings, you directed us to release an offering memorandum. So that offering memorandum was really intended to make sure that we could articulate to other potential proposers what the vision was that the city council had established for the downtown area, you know, the walkability, the activity, the reinvestment in some of the public facilities. And, and make sure that we had a competitive process because you received two unsolicited proposals. We wanted to make sure that there was a competitive environment and we made, made sure that not only did we get a proposer that could articulate the vision the best, but also make sure that it was financially beneficial, not only to the development partner, but also to the city as well. So we, I'm trying to, there we are. So on, in December, we released that offering memorandum. In February, Council, you reviewed, you received presentations from a series of proposers and selected Tara Frisbee to be our, to join in a partnership with us. And various reasons you selected Tara Frisbee as that proposer or that partner. One was how they captured your vision for the downtown area. Secondly, the scale of the development was lower than the other proposers that submitted. So that was, that was something that you talked about during that decision-making. And also from a revenue perspective, on a unit basis, Tara Frisbee offered the city the most beneficial proposal. So for those, for those reasons, you asked us to continue to work with them. Asked staff to work with Tara Frisbee to move forward with an interim agreement. And that interim agreement, we entered into in March of this year. And that interim agreement essentially established a framework by which we've been working with Tara Frisbee over the course of the past several months. During, during that time, as you all well know, lots of outreach opportunities, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Lots of public discussion, a lot of feedback that you've received from the public at, at these public meetings. And that really resulted in an extension of the interim agreement. It was initially supposed to end in late October. By the time we got to late October, we realized, hey, there's still a lot of work to be done. There's some public engagement we need to do. There's some reaction to the public engagement, public feedback that we've had that we want to make sure that we accommodated. So we extended the interim agreement in March, in October, and that, that extension gets us to May of two thousand and twenty-six. So fast forwarding to today, it's November seventeenth and eighteenth, and we're here talking a little bit about where we are as a result of all of that engagement. And, and after today's meeting, we have a series of steps that we'll take in order to move the project forward. The first, the first step will be a, a resolution that the city council will consider related to the ballot language in March. And I'm going to, I'm going to talk about all this as it relates to the ballot language in March. So that, that December second meeting is really driven by the deadline posed by the supervisor of elections, which is a December fifth deadline date. That December fifth deadline date is the time by which the city needs to submit ballot language to be considered in March. You've all pined that you wanted to make sure that should there be a development agreement that the city enters into with Tara Frisbee, that there's an opportunity for the public to ratify that project. So, so that direction that you've, that policy decision you made and the direction you've provided staff is that we'll consider a referendum at that March tenth election. So all these dates are really timed to be able to make sure that we meet that referendum deadline. So December second, you'll see some ballot language that will introduce the referendum idea. December eighteenth, Planning and Zoning will actually be meeting, and they'll be considering the lease agreements in the context of the master plan that Tara Frisbee has developed. Code requirement is that Planning and Zoning recommend leases going forward. So that, those leases will be submitted to Planning and Zoning for recommendation to this body for approval. Then fast forward to January, January sixth and January twentieth, those will be the dates where the council considers a couple of, a couple of items. One, you'll consider the master plan for the project. You'll consider a master partnership agreement. And the master partnership agreement is essentially the development agreement with Tara Frisbee. You'll consider some lease agreements. So those are the ground leases that'll dictate how, what, what our relationship is with Tara Frisbee related to the use of the property. And you'll also consider a construction management agreement because part of this project is tied to Tara Frisbee constructing some of these public facilities that we're looking at. So you'll see all of that on January sixth and January twentieth. All of that leads up to March tenth and that referendum date. Okay? So I wanted to give you that, that quick summary and where we were going, just to make sure everything's put in context. As I mentioned during that timeline discussion, there, there have been lots of opportunity, there's been lots of feedback where Tara Frisbee has done some active listening. You all have listened and provided feedback to Tara Frisbee as well. Thirty, thirty-five opportu, thirty-five agendaed opportunities for folks to speak at our meetings. One, one time where the mayor spoke at the state of the city where he talked about the project. And then at least six other opportunities where Tara Frisbee had entertained a feedback from the public related to the master plan that they had been working on. So engaging the public, trying to get some feedback and making adjustments to the plan. And as you know, there have been a lot of adjustments to the plan since this process has started. So all of those opportunities, including those opportunities, opportunities to provide us with email or respond, or provide questions or comments on the city webpage specifically dedicated towards the project. These are all opportunities that people had to try to communicate with us. And obviously, plan has shifted pretty dramatically as a result of all of that engagement and all the feedback that we've received. With that, I wanted Mr. Frisbee to be able to come up, talk a little bit about the changes to the project.
Thank you, Andy. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, city manager, city attorney, city staff and, and members of the community. I'd like to start by thanking all the members of city staff that have been working diligently with us as we continue making progress on the One Boca proposal. We continue to refine the proposed development that would occur on the approximately seven acres of city leased land that would generate significant value for the community. As was shown in the deck, this proposal has gone through many evolutions. It was developed in partnership with the city and the residents and is based on extensive feedback received over the past few months. The One Boca team has worked closely with residents, community leaders and area stakeholders to refine the plan and create a shared vision for the downtown neighborhood area. I would like to reemphasize the key highlights to the revised proposal, including significant improvements and enhancements to Memorial Park, doubling the amount of recreation space in the area from seven point six acres to more than fifteen acres, reducing the proposed development by approximately seventy-five percent and constructing the new retail, residential office and hotel uses by the Bright Line Station, and ensuring that community and the city lead the visioning effort for the enhancements to Memorial Park, including the green space and civic buildings west of Northwest Second Avenue. As Andy and the CBRE team shared and will share, this proposal will generate generational benefits to the city, allowing the city to accelerate the investment in green space, civic buildings and world-class amenities. Residents said they want more green space, more information and the ability to vote on the proposal. Today's presentation provides critical information that the council and residents can review and use to make informed decisions. We look forward to continuing to meet with community, with the community and presenting to HOAs and civic and business groups, speaking directly with residents and answering all their questions. If you, your HOA or group would like to meet with us, please, please reach out to us at info@oneboca.com. We look forward to being in touch. And, and let me just give some highlights here. So you can see the evolution of the plan from the original submission to the interim master plan to the most recent plan today. And the reduction on the last line going from just under one point six million square feet to just over one point one million square feet, a reduction of approximately twenty-five percent. So a meaningful reduction and, and of course, the majority or all of that private development is now east of Northwest Second Avenue. And I, I think it's important to highlight again that that one point one million square feet, that is several magnitudes lower than some of the original proposals from some of our competitors during the RFP process that were, the two closest proposals were over two million square feet and another one over five million square feet. And then again, just showing the, the new master concept plan and how all of the private development has been moved to the east of, of Second Avenue, allowing for Memorial Park to live up to its full potential. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. So after talking about the, the private side, I want to highlight some of the public investments as well in the, in the, the public realm of the project. Pardon me. One thing I do want to, a couple of things I want to say before I, I talk about the specifics. Obviously, a lot of, a lot of passion and a lot of interest surrounding what happens in the public side of the project area. We fully recognize that at a staff level, and I know Tara Frisbee recognizes that as well, thus the, the changes to the plan. The, the Tara Frisbee plan has a lot of fantastic elements to it, elements that we've built into our public facilities budget, which CBRE will talk about in a little bit. But the one thing I want to make sure that, I want to remind you of and make sure that the public's aware of is that even though we have these elements, even though we're talking about what, how they might function, what they might look like. You know, we do plan on a robust public outreach and design, planning effort once we understand whether or not the project is going to go forward. So we have the concepts. We, we have an idea of what the pieces are going to look like. We have an idea of how it will, how it will ultimately function. But it really will take that public outreach and that feedback that we get from the public to make sure that we're delivering on that active, valuable asset that I know that the public's really interested in. So with, with that said, the couple of, the components I, that I wanted to touch on real quick, just to make sure that everybody knows what we're thinking about. So to begin with, on the public safety front, the police and fire rescue substation. So we've talked about a police substation over the course of the past couple of months. In my, my conversations with the respective chiefs, we recognize that there is a real, real, real need for both disciplines to be, you know, housed downtown. Not that we'll have full operations downtown. There'll be a lot of public-facing type functions, so we'll have somebody at a reception desk. But we also need to make sure that there are place for our CRA officers, other officers that need to visit, communicate with those CRA officers, as well as an opportunity for some of our firefighters, paramedics to be able to be downtown if they're going to special events or if there are things going on downtown. There's a place for them to call home as well and be close to the activities. So a lot, a lot of the programming that we'll see at the police and fire rescue substation will be, well, one, it'll be a secure facility. But a lot, a lot of the programming will involve that, those public-facing activities, so interviews, you know, maybe police will have interviews or there'll be some fingerprinting or, you know, maybe someone's got a question about a ticket, whatever the case may be. But it's also an office space for officers and fire rescue personnel as well. The other, the other thing I want to highlight about the substation, it's not, as I've describing it, it's not just this office where a couple of officers will sit every once in a while. It will have, it will have a dynamic function to it. So, some of the smaller vehicles that fire rescue typically use, whether it's those Polaris's or some e-bikes, all, all those types of vehicles, all types of equipment that are needed by both disciplines, those will be housed there as well. So, it'll be a functioning, real place for police and fire rescue to center operations when they're downtown. Community center, so, obviously, you spent a lot of time talking about community center in the past, and that, that was really central to a lot of the conversation about activities, civic involvement, engagement, making, making sure that people find, and again, I'll use the term vibrant, making sure people find it as a vibrant place to be. And as Mr. Brown has said a couple of times, like, we, it really shouldn't be the uses, it should be a place to be. So, having a community center that can be a place where our residents can gather is really, really important. So, you've, you've already set a parameter of about 30,000, 35,000 square foot facility. We know that we're going to have some flexible meeting space there, multipurpose rooms and community meeting rooms, you know, that's going to be important to make sure that those community organizations, neighborhoods, even various public meetings can, can take place at the community center. Also, also important to think about the other activities that can be used in those multipurpose rooms, whether they're classes, educational opportunities, whatever they are, you know, we'll have the facilities available to make sure that those types of things can happen. The, the fourth bullet under the community center talks about ground flue, ground floor food and beverage. And I'll, and I'll say this comment goes for the community center and, and/or city hall. I think there are some really good opportunities to make sure that we're providing the types of services that folks need that are visiting the public space. So, whether folks are in the green area, they're walking through some of the nature areas that I'll talk about in a second, or they're getting done with an athletic activity, whether it's in the community, community center or outside, have, have the types of amenities and services that they could enjoy while they're there. So, some type of food and beverage, some type of cafe, ice cream shop, coffee shop, what have you. That, that's something that we're thinking about deploying as part of either the community center or city hall. So, go in one or the other, but I think it's an important piece that we'll want to ultimately factor into the, to the design of the buildings. And then, lastly, as it relates to the community center, the athletic facilities and/or basketball, multipurpose courts, that'll be really important to have that energy within the community center, bring a whole host of other folks to come down and, and enjoy the area. New and expanded outdoor spaces in the dedicated Memorial Park area. I might flip back and forth a little bit, just to kind of highlight where some of these items were, and to put some of these pieces and elements in perspective for everyone. So, the children's playground, which Tara Frisbee had located in this section of Memorial Park near the community, near the proposed community center, gives a really good opportunity for expansive playground, lots of interesting equipment, lots of new, exciting, modern facilities to be part of that children's playground. Gives us a really nice opportunity to have something unique and something that stand out. Obviously, the facilities that we have now are pretty dated. That children's playground gives us a really nice opportunity to provide something unique for the community. The large outdoor community green, which again, taking a quick step back and highlighting it here. The idea, idea there was to have something that's really flexible, available for multi-purposes, kind of informal in nature, not fully programmed, but some, somewhere where people can just relax and enjoy, whether it's throwing a frisbee, throwing baseball, just hanging out, whatever the case may be, just have that informal space. Now, council member Wigder and I have talked a little bit about, well, you know, we could even, you know, we might not have, you know, use sports, but we might have small peewee leagues that, you know, show up there. So, that might be something that we think about too, to get, get some of that energy. So, there are some really interesting opportunities that we could deploy as it relates to that large community green. The Banyan Village, which, whoops, which is essentially this area, taking advantage of the Banyans, I think it's, goes without saying in the name of the area. But, Tara Frisbee rightfully identified that as a place where, you know, there can be some retail, there can be some pop-up retail, small retail, something again, to cater to the needs of the folks that are, you know, they're using the community center, at city hall, enjoying the athletic facilities, enjoying the green space, just taking a walk, whatever the case may be. But, something small that'll be able to provide some of those type of retail activities that they might, that someone might need as they're visiting the area. And then, lastly, the garden walk, which in Tara Frisbee's plan is located right here, it's got that look to it. So, through a natural area with some walking paths, another unique experience that someone can have on Memorial Park, something that, that's open to additional people, a more broad cut of the Booker Tobe population. So, again, those elements, I think, are all really great to incorporate into the plan. When we get down to the real planning phase and the public engagement, we'll figure out what do they look, what do they look like, where should they be, how, what should they, how should they function exactly? Lastly, as it relates to, lastly on this slide, city hall. So, we've talked about a three, 30,000 square foot facility, and we know that that will have some office space, but we also know that there'll be some community-facing services there. So, we talked about the need to make sure that folks who are more eastern in the community or downtown have an easy way to be able to access our services. So, whether it's cashiering-type services, permitting, paying a ticket, getting a parking pass, whatever the case may be, they have the ability to be able to do that downtown. We also talked a lot about those multipurpose rooms. So, we know that, you know, we want to have that civic private presence where council, other boards can have their meetings downtown. But, we also know that it's important to make sure that it's multifunctional. So, there are lots of good examples out there, communities who have, they don't have a formal chambers where that's all it's dedicated for, but it's multipurpose, you can have your meetings, but you can also have, have it available for function. So, we've talked a lot about engaging the city hall as a place where we can have events. The deputy mayor and I have talked about, well, you know, maybe weddings, we could have weddings out there, you know, have that, that type of function available. So, so lots of opportunities to be able to use city hall to make sure that we have that active and engaging presence in the downtown area. Next, I want to talk about recreational facilities. And again, you know, these are all going to be elements of the larger project and things that we'll want to engage the public in. But, we, we know that there are some general parameters that are going to be deployed as it relates to some of these facilities. So, we know the tennis center is a, for instance, we're, we're planning on 10 courts, but we also know that we need a, a new facility. So, we know that we're going to make that investment now, whether it's in the same location or it's relocated, that's something that we can determine as we're going through the planning process with the public. Basketball courts, anybody who has an office, well, like, my office as a, for instance, I watch folks on the basketball court daily, and it's almost constantly in use. So, we know that that's, that's a, a facility that's in demand in, in the downtown area. So, you know, we know we have two, two outdoor courts that are programmed right now, one indoor court within the community center. You know, again, where those go exactly, how they're oriented, don't really know yet, but we know we need those types of facilities within downtown area. We talked a little bit about the civic green space already. Singing pines, a little bit of the same story, we know that there's a historic component to it, we know that we want it to be a place where we can recognize some of the, the community's past. We also recognize the, the need for that children's function, we talked about what that might look like. But, again, we don't want to necessarily program it today wholly, we want to make sure that we have that public engagement before we figure out exactly what it looks like. Lastly, ball fields and skate park. So, from the ball field perspective, know that there's a historical presence with the softball fields that we have at Memorial Park, and, and that, those are currently, while they're serving a purpose, they don't necessarily meet today's dimensional standards, they don't meet today's regulations, they don't have the amenities that the softball association has asked for on multiple occasions, not only to this board, but also to the Beach and Park District Board. And, we know that from an operational perspective, having those facilities located at Sugar Sand in particular, offers us a lot of flexibility in terms of sports programming, but also offers a lot of efficiencies as it relates to the operation of those fields. Right now, we don't have the ability to really appropriately maintain and serve the needs of the softball leagues right now. It's really difficult for us to be able to load up equipment, bring it over to the sites, make, get the staff on site, address all the maintenance issues. So, having everything at Sugar Sand will be much more efficient as we're going forward. Whoops. Let me finish up real quick. And then, skate park, obviously, a dated skate park here, here, or, excuse me, in the downtown area. We're working with the Beach and Park District to be able to modernize, make sure we have an exciting skate park going forward, something that will definitely generate some energy and encourage usage. So, whoops, pardon me again. So, with that, I'm going to ask CBRE to join us. They'll talk about the revenue side of the project, and also talk a little bit about the expenditures as well, some of which are incorporated in the conversation I just had with you. So, I think I'm turning it over to you, Mike.
Thank you, Andy. So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council, I'm going to tell you a little bit about the financial benefits that we think the city's going to receive over the next 99 years, over the full term of the ground lease. And I will just tell you, just by way of background, there are literally hundreds of lines of information and data behind this. It's been changing pretty regularly over the, over the last months as the program has changed. But, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk in general terms and just know that we have a full analysis behind this that our financial consulting group has built. To begin, the city will receive base rent over the term of the lease, and the way that it's been framed today, it will be a percentage of rent based on the gross proceeds that the developer achieves as the rents, or as the project becomes stabilized. That will be paid over 99 years of the ground lease term. And just by way of background, also, there is a minimum base rent that will be paid, which is based on the fair market value of the, of the value of the real estate. So, at the very least, you're going to get the bare amount, not the bare minimum, the basic amount, and then a percentage of the gross revenues. So, there's an inherent, or there's a embedded profit percentage based on that structure that we have, or not profit percentage as much as just that you will get an increase in rents as the value of the, as the value of the real estate escalates over time. In terms of ad valorem taxes, now, today, the tax of the property is basically unused or it's untaxed, and because of that, this new 7.72 acres of property will be taxed going forward. And what we have done there in that instance is we have followed the property appraiser's standard approach to generate what we think will be the, the values and the money that will be received by the city over time. And that will apply both to the city and the CRA as the, as those revenues are achieved. And in addition to just the city and CRA receiving taxes, also, the county, the school board, and other taxing authorities will benefit as well. Now, one of the things that we have established is that the city would participate in the developer's profit or upside revenue over, over time, okay? And what that means is today, the, the way that that is typically calculated is something called yield on cost. And so, that the developer will have a certain yield on cost that they are going to try, be attempting to achieve, and that's somewhere between 8 to 10% of the actual cost of the construction of the project. If they are able to achieve greater than that 8 to 10% based on the specific type of uses, the city will participate and receive 10% of the profit or the upside that the developer's been able to achieve over time. And then, in terms of transfer fees, the city will earn a transfer fee, once the project is stabilized, the city will earn a transfer fee of 1% of the gross sale price and any future transfer of the ownership interest. And so, you know, today, we expect that it's going to take, you know, maybe 10 years for the project to be fully built out, but every time that the project is sold, once the buildings are stabilized, rented up, the city will, and they are sold, in fact, the city will receive 1% of the gross revenues in future sales. And then, lastly, I will stipulate that, you know, one of the things that the developer was required to, was required to do is to contribute to the mobility, and today, that is expected to be approximately $7.8 million contribution. I see, Ms. Corzett, did you want her to say something? No? Okay. And if we could go to the next slide? Okay, so, here's a, here's a, you know, like I mentioned early on, these are the numbers that have been built in the background, and you can see they're quite substantial. So, what we've done here is there's basically two columns on the far right that shows both what the revenue is over the 99 years and what the present value of those revenues are. You know, one of the things that we wanted to make sure of is that we calculated these numbers, it's hard to, you know, when you look out over a 99-year window, typically the way that you, that in the real estate vernacular, you look at the net present value, in this particular case, we discounted those revenues by four and a half percent. So, you can see that the projected ground rent is the top line, is estimated to be $1.9 billion over 99 years. But, when you discount it to a present value today, it's $158 million. And you can see what the ad valorem taxes are, in that case, it's 1.2, almost 1.3 billion, discounted to $83 million, and then you can see the CRA tax, et cetera, et cetera. When you get through the CRA tax, the profit and the upside participation, transfer fees, and then the off-site improvement contribution, the total proceeds to the city over 99 years is over $4 billion. Now, when you discount it back again at the four and a half percent discount rate that I was stipulating, it's $353 million is what we estimate the revenue to be today. We'll be happy to answer any questions about that in a moment. Leanne's going to go ahead and take you through some additional expense items now.
Thank you, Mike. So, before I get started, I want to first acknowledge a couple of my colleagues that are sitting on the second row, Richard Midgley and Mary Spinks. So, while I'm giving this overview, it's important to note that they have been in the weeds, in the granular detail of the project plan, to really come up with these cost estimates, and I appreciate you all being here today. So, Mr. Lucasic spoke earlier about the public facilities, and then, this page and the next one are really focused on the associated costs with those various uses that were on the west side of the plan, that's what we're going to discuss today. So, Mary and Richard and their team used real-life data from other projects, so, for example, city hall costs. We looked at new city halls that will be built in Pompano Beach, I toured one in the city of Clearwater last week, we're working on Broward County and Pinellas County, so we use some real data from other projects that are underway, but they also have, they do nothing but cost estimation and project management. So, they also have a lot of information that they're benchmarking across the state of Florida that they, they aligned our cost estimates with. And so, the cost estimates that you'll see on the next page provide a planning-level view of the scale, the feasibility, and some of the major cost drivers. And we've listed some of those cost drivers, it's not an extensive list, but it gives you an overview of what they looked at in terms of square footage, open space, roadways, utilities, infrastructure, and they looked at specialized spaces that may be needed. And it's important in government facilities that we're not building the Taj Mahal, but the finishes do need to be durable and appropriate, and certainly make sure that the accessibility requirements are met. So, again, in the, in the bottom half of the screen, you can see a list of some of those items, I touched on utilities, parking, smart streetlights. Their, their cost estimations are literally, like Mike said about the financials, hundreds of line items and very, very detailed, but for the purposes of this overview, we wanted to give you the, the 30,000-foot view of, of how the numbers break down. Thanks. Nope. Nope, bar chart, other way. Uh-oh. He broke it. Sorry about that. So, there's a bar chart that summarizes those... Uh-oh. He broke it. Sorry about that. So there's a bar chart that summarizes those items, and it is listed right here, and you can see that the projected west-side uses that Rob talked about earlier and Andy described are about $198 million, and they're broken down on the left-hand side in accordance with buildings, actual physical, vertical structures, and then the open spaces, recreation, and the site works, which means it's items like landscaping and streetlights and furniture, outdoor furniture, as well as the utilities and the underground work. And then I just touched on utilities and roadways, and then transportation and mobility, and that's where items like parking would, would reside in the cost estimates. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Lucasic to talk about our next steps and recap the timeline.
Okay. Thanks, Leanne. So I talked a little bit about this during the timeline, but I'll give you a little more, slightly more detail. So again, going to the top of the slide, December 2nd, critical date for you to consider that ballot language. But also, what, what you'll see during that meeting is a presentation from PFM, which is the independent financial consultant that we've hired to help evaluate the project. So not, not only will they review the project, consistent with some of the standards established by Florida statute governing P3s, but they'll also do the financial analysis for the organization as well as a broader economic analysis to get an understanding of the impacts of the project on the regional economy. So you'll, you'll see that information. As part of that, you'll, we'll also have the appraisal results, so we hope to be able to have that information incorporated into PFM's analysis as it relates to the impacts of the project. December 16th, which is a city council meeting, I didn't touch on this in the timeline, but this, this is, we're planning on using that date to have a discussion about the regulatory structure and the review process going forward. So we'll have more details for you as it relates to how are we going to approach the LDRs, what, what does that approval process look like as we're going forward with the project, and then what happens after, you know, referendum? What sort of steps would we take, assuming that the council approves an MPA and the leases and the construction management agreement, and it's ratified by the public? You know, then what steps do we take? So we'll, we'll have a little bit of that conversation on the 16th. 18th, again, is the planning and zoning meeting, at which they will consider the leases and make a recommendation to this body. And then January 6th and January 20th are the dates at which this body will consider the master partnership agreement, which again is our development agreement, the ground lease, ground leases, the construction management agreement, and the master plan. And then obviously, the last date, the important date, is the voter referendum to, you know, ratify any approved transactions by this council. That is the end of our presentation. You know, I'm happy to answer any questions, as are Mike, Leanne, Mike and Leanne.
Thank you all. Council members, any questions of staff or CBRE? All right, then we'll open up the public hearing if there's no questions on this. John Pearlman, first card, and then anyone else who wishes to speak, please come forward.
I think that, well, first of all, Mayor, to address your question, why am I talking about the Bright Line? The reason is, is this entire project, the government campus redevelopment is centered around the Bright Line. The whole motivation, based on the entitlement narrative from Terra Frisbee, pertains to a transit-oriented community, which was in the heading of their entitlement narrative. So the entire premise of why, why you've created this, this project, which by the way, is going to be turned down by the voters when you send it to them, as we continue to waste staff money paying Mr. Lucasic a quarter million dollars to be working on this project when it's, and you know, who's double, double that of next-in-line wage earner pertaining to the project, Mr. Kaler, at half of that. And you know, he's the liaison of this project. We have to question why the resources are being deployed in that manner. They're going to waste. So the answer is, is that you're, you've created a project that's set in line. Thankfully, Save Boca came around and we, it's going to be stopped, but you set in motion a project that's going to, that was basing the future of the city of Boca Raton on a failing company of Bright Line, a company that has more than $5 billion in outstanding debt, a company that just saw its bond ratings reduced to junk status this year, a company that lost a cumulative $1.8 billion, over half a billion dollars in 2024 alone, a failing company that's being sued from everybody that, that's being sued on every angle, from the Florida East Coast Railway to all of the people that are getting hit regularly and killed by these trains. So you, you set the city on a motion, on a, on a course of motion towards the future of this city centered around this, this failing company, this liability of Bright Line. Secondly, I'd like to mention that why are they, why are you still talking about the park here? The park's no longer a part of this deal. You, you've engaged, you've, in conjunction with the developer, the mayor, has deployed a misleading marketing campaign over the past couple of weeks, saying that you're doubling our green space with this plan, implying, suggesting that as part of this plan, you're giving the people of Boca Raton Memorial Park. This project shouldn't, shouldn't discuss the park at all. The only slides we should be seeing are of the dense development to the east of Northwest Second Ave. By the way, Terra should never be building the city buildings. I mean, they're, they're a liability. They, they were sued for the surfside collapse. They shouldn't be any, touching any of our, or working on any of our buildings. Thank you.
For any other speakers, could we just confirm, Mr. Sohaney and Mr. Kaler, none of our employees are being paid on a basis concerning the time they spend on any one project? Our employees have salary and do a number of things. Isn't that right?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
All right, thank you. And while, and we do appreciate concerns about costs. We don't think that $2.6 million is a can of Coke, and therefore, you know, our staff, our staff time is valuable. We'll respond to further comments later. I just wanted to get that one out there while I was contemporaneous. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. Pashke?
So Pam Pashke, 341 Southwest Second Street. In the presentation that you guys gave over there, what is the 1% transfer of ownership interest about? I don't know what that is. So I have that question. And I would like assurances that the parking will be free throughout the city park side, at least, if not more. And then my third question really would have been not, is not relevant to this proposal right now, but I'm concerned about where the city decided to put the notice of public hearing for the Camino Square project. It was placed on Camino Real, parallel, not perpendicular, parallel to the street. There was no signage about the public hearing at the main entrance to this parcel on Third Avenue. I don't know why you think the people on Third Avenue are not important and that this part, this big yellow-orange thing sign that was in the bushes on the side of the road on Camino Real. So I would like to, an explanation of why it wasn't placed on Third Avenue by the entrance to the parcel. That's it.
Mr. Liebelsom?
I did put a card in, but maybe it's, didn't show up.
Oh, I, I saw that earlier for the CRA, so I thought that would...
Yeah, I put two cards.
Please proceed.
No worries. Mike Liebelsom, 398 Northeast Third Court. First, I am 100% behind Save Boca's petition to have the people approve the sale or lease of public land to developers. My wife and I collected signatures for Save Boca. I want to thanks John Pearlman for alerting the community to what was happening with the Terra Frisbee development and being the driving force behind the Save Boca effort. What he has accomplished in such a short term, short time has been amazing. This Terra Frisbee deal needs to be entirely scrapped. It's a bad deal for the residents of Boca. I don't know who's doing the financial analysis here, but there are so many errors and so many misstatements that I have heard from this council, from CBRE, that I would probably need an hour to go through them all. Per the approved city budget, this council has budgeted spending $80 million of our tax dollars over the next three years to build infrastructure for Terra Frisbee before a dime comes back to the public. And that's before another $7 million goes into Bright Line's piggy bank for another platform on top of the million dollars, millions of dollars we already paid for the Bright Line parking garage. Public-private partnerships only apply when a city does not have sufficient liquidity or an area is blighted. Neither of these apply here. What we have, however, is an 80% increase in taxes, in property taxes, over the last five years that's been levied on the city of Boca Raton residents. Where's this money gone? It seems like this council has a use-it-or-lose-it mentality with respect to the people's money. This money should be returned to the people. The 80% increase in property taxes should be now returned to the people, and there should be a property tax cut. It seems like the huge majority of this council's time of the last four months has been taken up with this Terra Frisbee deal. It's the number-one critical project out of 63 in our capital improvement plan for the next five years. Meanwhile, hugely important citizen issues are being ignored, including all manner of public safety issues. I hear about organized car theft rings in gated communities in central Boca, a street racing culture that's taking place downtown, floodwater management, oversight and management of the $190 million bond issue for the new police station. Just one final thing on CBRA. I have heard, please tell me if I'm wrong, that they get paid $2.8 million success fee if this deal goes ahead. In addition, I understand that they're going to get a commission on sales of developments and condos. Given that conflict, anything they tell this commission, this council should be ignored, and the people should ignore.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jonathan Ungian, 6501 Congress Avenue. I think it, to Mr. Liebelsom's point, I think it would be important to, and I see Mr. Zervis is gone, to discuss the $80 million. Is it, is it a use-it-or-lose-it fund? Is it something that the state's giving, you know, bonds for, or, you know, funds for that the city is then using for such a redevelopment? I did see that in the budget line item, the 80 million, and it would be good to know where that's coming from. I know that's not to roll out necessarily the red carpet. I'm hoping it's to increase the walkability, to the bike lanes that are, Mr. Wilson's talking about, to make it a more connected city. But I, I did see it, and I see you're, we're talking about it. I can show you in the previous meetings, the 80 million on that.
Mr. Ungian, can you just elaborate? You're, you're referring to it as 80 million. Maybe that number is throwing me off. Which, what's, describe that more, please.
I think it was a government campus, it was a line item that said government campus and $80 million. Transit-oriented community. I did see it in the budget.
Excuse me, Mr. Liebelsom?
But to the point of, of the park, the current park, unless you're, you know, playing baseball or softball, which is going to be 30 kids or so, I think having a legit park next to, you know, this development on the east side, I think is something that people will go to. And, you know, as opposed to just a destination to go play your game and to leave. And I, I don't think that the current capacity of the existing park, which does have a big parking lot in the middle of it, the city hall and the big parking lot there, I can see how turning that all into, to green space, doing the parking around the side, let alone the east side, which is all concrete and, and defunct. I didn't like Mr. Frisbee's word of default, but it truly is. I mean, they are buildings from 40 years ago that serve no purpose, that you can't add on to the police station. You know, it, it truly is. So adding to the green space there and the, I, I see that. And I do like to see that, like I said, I, I wasn't a fan of it initially. I didn't like that the park and the rec space wasn't, was being given up, you know, but I think it's become a much better plan through these guys, and I think that's what's important. The only point I would like to make to the CBRE thing is, besides the point that they made, is the, the leasing of office space, that they are their leasing broker. That is my only concern with it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Judy Morrow, 1305 Northeast Fifth Avenue. Number one, I still have not heard the appraisal. And if you look back a 99 years, 99 years ago, you could have got land in Boca for nothing, pennies. And now, we, we have to, we might lose our post office downtown? That's ridiculous. Can't the city say that it's eminent domain or something? You want to take away our police station? I have friends and neighbors that their cars have been stolen out of their garages while they are home, while they are on vacation. We need police downtown. Make it bigger. They're seven acres? Make it bigger. I mean, my goodness. With the tennis courts, oh, I forgot to bring up my racket, but you know my racket. Ten courts we have now. They're already facing north and south. They're built the right direction. All they need to do is be remodeled. All we need is bigger restrooms and bathrooms like they have at Swim and Racket out west that you provided. I have heard city employees say that we have a recreation master plan, and no one has ever shared it since the beginning of the year, since I've been coming to these meetings. I think it would be so nice to share it. Ms. Drucker had to ask two times for her question about recreation to our recreation director. I mean, there's things that I just, transparency. The reason people do not trust you up there, the mayor and the four people, is because of the urban development, because of the traffic, because of the things that you have allowed to happen in the last 10 years. It is not, it, it's not quality of life. It's not what people move to Boca to have. And you, we want to keep our backyard, our playground, we want to keep it where they are. So talk about the seven buildings. Talk about the five buildings that are air, sky, and air pollution. They are, they are destroying that neighborhood that has one- and two-story homes. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. We'll close the time for public comment. Mr. Sohaney, there are some easy questions I think CBRE can answer about the finances. Could you answer some about rec plan and the fact that we are going to have a police presence and the fact that our police officers just don't sit in the station?
Yeah, that's correct. So the new police, proposed police department headquarters is centrally located, and the police presence throughout the entire city is not going to change whatsoever based on our laydown, where our headquarters is located. Obviously, the substation is required just because of the nature of the government campus, and we want those forward-facing services and from a public safety... And from a public safety standpoint, we want that face. So, big picture, nothing's going to change at all regarding our police presence throughout the city, whether we go forward with the police department headquarters or not.
Can you just confirm, it's been, you know, I think to restore trust, we will have to get accurate information out there. I think it's inaccurate to say that we have a recreation plan that hasn't been shown. Is that, can you just talk, you've talked about it. Could you remind everyone again, please, Mr. Saney?
Sure. We've got a recreation plan that's basically paused until we get clarity on whether or not the government campus project is going to go forward. We've got plans for a softball field in Sugar Sand at the direction of the council. We are continuing on just doing the environmental study associated with that, and then when we conclude that, we'll bring that back to council for further direction to move forward with that particular project. Once we get that direction, we've got a conceptual plan that we work with Beach and Parks Districts that I'll brief in February to the council, and that'll lay out some other concepts of recreational amenities throughout the city, once we're informed with the proposed government campus proposal.
Right. And then, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I can comment on the CIP 80 million?
Please.
Yes. So, just to make sure I understand the question on the 80 million. So that is in our CIP document. So just to kind of remind everybody, our CIP is a five-year plan, and the first year of the CIP is in our budget. And if it's in our budget, then we are authorized to spend that money because the council's approved it. If it's on years two through five, it's just a plan. And the particular line item that you're talking about, the TOC project, is not committed to any funding associated with this potential government campus project.
All right. Thank you for running down the capital improvement plan. Finally, there were some questions about the financial analysis and the transfer fee. Would you like to answer? Would CBRE like to answer?
I'd be happy to answer, Mr. Mayor. So the transfer fee is really pretty simple. In addition to the base rent and the taxes that you would receive, anytime, once the building is stabilized, that the property should be sold. Let's say, for example, it sold for $50 million, one of the apartment buildings. The city would get 1% of that sale price, or $500,000, and that would happen every time the building is sold over the entire length of the lease. So if it was to sell four, five, 10 times, however many times it gets sold, you all would benefit, the city would benefit.
By the way, that figure was probably a low figure just for illustrative purposes.
That was just for illustrative, that was just considering one building and my simple math, Mr. Mayor.
Right, very well, thank you. Could you talk a little bit about who, and maybe, or staff too, who, just the financial projections? People can disagree, but talk about the methodology we've used so far, and if staff wants to throw in anything more, because I know it's multiple people have looked at them.
So the financial projections, basically, we took the original proposal as provided by the developer, and at that time, if you may recall, just as an example, it was $65,000 per residential unit that would be constructed on the site. To that, $65,000 times however many units that would be constructed, the city will get 7% of the gross rents. Is that what you're asking?
No, the question was who did them?
Who did them?
Someone was questioning their accuracy and said, we don't know who did them. Could you just talk about the professionals who've been involved in these?
We have an entire team at CBRE. It's called our Financial Consulting Group. He's based out of Charlotte, North Carolina, and we've been working very closely with him, with Jim Zervis. And then, in addition to our projections, they have been back-checked by your financial advisor, PFM. So we're very confident that we have applied the best market data that we have available, and we've got a great team of professionals behind us doing the analysis.
Okay. Councilmembers, Mr. Thompson.
Can I ask a couple of additional questions? Thank you. So could we go back to the transfer fees for a second?
Yes, sir.
I think you described it as it would be 1%. Say, the example you used was if one of the apartment buildings was sold, is that?
Yes, sir.
Maybe we should break it down a little bit. There's part of the plan that Terra Frisbee has proposed would include condominium buildings, and those are on private property currently, right?
That is correct.
So how does the 1% transfer fee apply in that case?
In that case, it would not apply. It would only apply to the property that is being leased by the city to the developer. It would not apply to the private land on which they would be developing the condos.
But that is land that would still be owned by the city, or would have been, we have a long-term lease on it.
Not, not on the condo land.
No, no, okay, setting aside the condos. Now, you're saying there's no transfer fee on the condos? I'm glad I asked that.
On condos, that's correct.
Because I was assuming we meant on the condo buildings specifically. So what I'm hearing is that there would be a transfer fee that applied when the city land on which there was a privately-built apartment building was sold, we would get 1%? Is that what I'm hearing?
1% of the sale price. Yes, sir.
Even though we own the land?
You do, but you would still, the land would continue, the ground lease would continue for 99 years. So you will continue to receive the revenue from the ground lease, and you would, as the, as the asset was being sold, you would get 1% of the sale price. So you, you will continue to own the land for the, actually in perpetuity, for the 99 years and beyond.
Did you just have something to add, Leon?
I was just going to say the improvements would transfer, obviously not the land because it's on the, on a ground lease.
Okay. We may have to dig into this a little bit more. May I ask a couple more questions, too? So, if we could go back to the slide, the presentation you all gave on, there was a, I think it was like the third to last slide, there was a bar graph of the public facilities budget. I think it was maybe one more down, one more forward, maybe two more forward. Yeah, forward.
Do you want the bar graph?
Please. There we go. One more. So I see the first few, the first line item here is a city project, that means a city building, it's like the civic buildings. And then there's a couple of line items here for West Development Buildings, West Development Open Space, West Development Site-Wide Works. But the other two are not specifically limited to West Development. Is that accurate? Like this, this 18.2?
It all relates just to West.
All of it does.
So, yeah, we could have labeled it West along that whole side, but it is all West.
Okay, so the, the 18.21 million allocated to utilities and roadways, that is strictly on the West side?
That's correct.
None of it is on the East side?
Correct.
And that's also true for transportation and mobility?
Correct.
None of that is for the East side?
On the, on the transportation and mobility, there is a parking garage on the East side.
Okay, so that does include?
Yep, that's right.
Okay. We talked about transfer of ownership. Okay, I think that's probably all I have now. We'll probably talk again tomorrow. Thank you.
Sure.
Further questions now? Mr. Wigder?
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, and I'm going to have to reserve some of them for tomorrow because I want to digest this and really review it in conjunction with everything else being provided. In terms of the 1% transfer fee, I am familiar with this. In fact, in New York, in co-ops, where there is a, even there's ground leases, but even the, the state and the cities have a, what they call it, a flip tax, that every time, every single time a transaction takes place, that the 1% gets paid to the city, in addition to all the continuing obligations, as you said, of the ground lease rent, the percentage rent, and potentially the profit percentage. So, you know, obviously here, what we're trying to say is, we are not restricting the ability of the owners of such buildings, which are still on public land, but that they'll have these lease rights. So we're not prohibiting them from transferring those buildings. Certainly, they're able to do so, but in the event that they do so, that we get a fee every, every single time. So if it turns out that these buildings are traded once a year for, you know, $100 million, for example, then we get an extra $1 million every time that, every time that transaction takes, takes place. And so again, it, you know, it also creates a, you know, it creates a, you know, a kind of a stability where the, the then-owner of the building will not just keep flipping and flipping the deal. You know, I have questions with the city attorney about the 1% transfer fee being applied to just the quote "sale of the building" or the transfer of equity. The transfer of equity might not be the whole building. In many instances, in a partnership, just like this is proposed to be a partnership, the entire percentage is not sold at the same time. What if 80% is sold? What if 50% is sold? What if 30% is sold? So I have questions in the drafting that, in terms of an equity transfer, that, any equity transfer, that the city should get compensated in terms of its transfer fee. I'm going to get more detailed into my legal comments, not at this, not right now, just saying these concepts still need to be fleshed out, at least with my preliminary discussions with the city attorney. Likewise, I heard discussions, this is fine, in terms of the 80 million and the amount that's, that's paid in terms of taxes, and I just want to reiterate that a significant portion of this quote 80 million or of a lot of the infrastructure that are being paid from the downtown, or could be paid from the downtown, are from the CRA's tax increment financing, right? So that means that instead of remitting those tax dollars to the county, the city, the CRA, gets to redeploy those funds in the CRA district for use for re-improvement of the infrastructure. So this is not a situation where those dollars would be capable of going back to the city residents, as much as I would like to, too. Taxes are too high. This is a situation where if those funds are not used pursuant to the CRA's budget for infrastructure improvements for the things here, those funds would get remitted to the county, and they would be using it for whatever they want. That is what's going to happen at the expiry of the CRA in 2043. And obviously, Mr. Zervis, and I know PFM have looked at, have looked at the, the, the issue in terms of the ground lease, the tax revenue, and the tax increment that's happening. And I'm hopeful, Mr. McShay, that we can then start sharing a little bit more detail with what happens, and maybe you could just elaborate a little bit, what happens in the year 2043 to the CRA revenue that comes to the city and to the tax revenue that comes to the city?
Mr. Wigder, so as I understand it, at that time, it's going to drop significantly. You know, that the CRA will no longer, once it expires in '43, those revenues will no longer belong to the CRA. It will drop. I think it's, I think as, as our quick review, I think it's to the tune of $7 million in '43. How that gets transferred around the city, I can't speak to that. Mr. Zervis would be better to do that, but it will drop.
Thank you. We will have, you know, in the coming months and longer, we will have some significant conversations of how we're managing fiscally long-term, and this project is, is, is one of those resources, and even, you're right, I think it was around 7 million that would get lost. Not that it goes just that we lose it, it's that it gets, the city would no longer retain the tax increment financing, and that would, it would get transmitted to the county, as it traditionally does. Right now, just that little downtown section, the CRA, right now, just those funds are tax increment that stay within that zone. The rest is just the normal taxes that, that we pay. With respect to the calculation of the net present value, of course, in the previous many months, and I agree with, you know, some of the comments, that the discounted cash flow analysis and the assumptions on discount rate and whatnot, you know, could lead to flawed assumptions, you know, when they're projected out so long, in such a long period of time. So, you know, one of the things that I was asking staff and developers, et cetera, is, you know, come back to us, tell us, what's the rent? What's the rent in year one? What's the rate of inflation? What's the rent in year 10? How much do we get on that annual basis? I know people like to kind of, right, we want to wrap things up in a bow and say it's, you know, it's $250 million, or it's $150 million of net present value. And what we're hoping, right, is of course that the appraisal is going to come out, and the appraisal is going to show something less than the net present value of all the income streams that we're getting. But if the income streams that we're getting are discounted based on assumptions, then, you know, usually what I would see in this situation is something a little bit more detailed, like a sensitivity analysis. What happens if the, what happens if the discount rate is here? What happens, you know, what happens if it's here? It just so happens that since COVID, we have encountered a randomized, let's call it, you know, spike in inflation, right? Inflation was 9.2% for that one year and 6.2% for that other year, and, you know, things to some of the speaker's points that's saying that values went, you know, haywire a little bit because of people moving here, because of inflation, too. And likewise, our contracts with our, with our workers and things like that also got subject to that. So this is not that there's money just sitting here, these are all subject to inflation. So I'm hopeful in the, you know, in the upcoming discussions, we can get a little bit more detailed out here, you know? What's the rent look like? What's the calculations look like? What does it look like for the percentage rent? What does it look like for the profits? Again, I appreciate it. In this setting, it's very difficult to, you know, have, you know, really, really kind of, you know, detailed discussions of what this should, you know, of how this really fleshes out, because you don't have, you know, there's limited time. But we do need some more, I mean, I know you could provide me all the information, but we do need some more information and discussion, because I do feel that presenting just the summary slide is, you know, doesn't help the public make as informed decisions as possible. Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, Mr. Wigder, that's, it's a, it's a, it's a great summary of all of the data that we use to create that detail that you've seen today, the, the big picture analysis. But we have, we have broken it out, and we have used different discount rates, we have used different escalation rates. I have, you know, 10, 20, 30-year analysis, you know, to understand what the short, medium term revenue streams will look like to the city, and that, that has been at Mr. Zervis' request. And then again, PFM is analyzing all of that in the background and backchecking everything that we're doing. So I'm confident that, you know, any number of different scenarios that we can plug in and make sure that you all are very comfortable with the projections, both on the very aggressive and very conservative side. And so we're, we're very comfortable with it. Leon?
Yeah, and I would just like to add to that. The summary roll-up does have an annual line item for years one through 99 with each of those different rent streams. So you can see exactly when upside revenue kicks in, you can see exactly where, where the transfer fees are projected. So there is literally years one through 99 with when the, with, when each of those income streams starts. So we're happy to share that back up with you.
Will that be shared with the public? Is it published online? It should be put online? Everyone should see it?
That, that's your decision. But it is certainly available.
That's fine. Just, Mr. Mayor, a couple more questions, if I may. One thing that I've talked to about the city attorney, and if you're familiar, there's been a significant discussion, I know Ms. Druckers and I would talk about this often, with property taxes, property taxation, elimination of property taxation, reduction of property taxation, recalculation of property taxes, and that there could be many opportunities to change the way that property taxes are paid. Of course, that could significantly impact how we fund our services and things of that, of things of that nature. Mr. Kaler, can you confirm that pursuant to our discussions, that we're talking about putting in a provision, or one, at least one of my concerns behind the scenes, which again, we, public's fine, but one of the things that we've been talking about is to make sure that there's an opportunity for a payment in lieu of taxes, in the event that the property tax calculations that would normally be applicable to this development are somehow altered by a change of the legislature, such that the revenue that we would generate from the tax, from the property taxes on a project like that are changed, that instead we're requiring that the developer pay us the payment in lieu of taxes that we would have gotten, right? Because the point is, this is a return on our private, this is a return on our public land, this is a return on our investment, these, you know, so that we would get those funds as, as a, as a payment in lieu of taxes.
Yes, the ground lease includes a payment in lieu of taxes clause. We're still working with our partner to try to make sure they don't get double taxed in case the legislature has, hypothetically, were to eliminate property taxes and then impose some other way to collect, we just want to make it fair so that they're not getting double taxed. But yes, we have a pilot program clause in, in the lease.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. The public should know 70% of the properties in this city are residential. 70% of that 70% are homesteaded. 70% of that 70% are homesteaded. Those tick up only at 3%. So that means the city has not, most of those properties are not paying 80% more, they're paying the 3% more, so that means the super majority of all the homeowners are still paying the 3% more that they pay every year. And unfortunately, the property tax gap that we're talking about falls on the, falls on the commercial property owners, and that is another significant concern with a lot of the bills that are being proposed in Tallahassee for discussion at another time. But in my mindset, as I think about balancing the needs of the city, how we pay for things, the tax base, and going forward for funding, all the things that are important to us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the questions, Ms. Drucker.
So yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Wiger, for bringing that up, because I was going to give a report later, and I, and I'm going to, and I'm going because I just sat through a call earlier today on property tax. We know there's eight proposals out there, and we know that one of those proposals is going to make it to the ballot. That is what the governor's suggesting, the House Speaker, and the Senate President. So we know that one of these versions of these proposals, seven are joint resolution, which is the House and the Senate have agreed to listen to them. Some of them are being heard as early as next week in interim committee meetings. We'll know a lot of information by December, and in the first week of January, they want to, they want to fast-track. If you know what fast-track is, is they want to put it through, through the three committees so that they can get it approved on both sides and on a ballot. So I think it's really important for us during this conversation that, because this information is misleading, because we wouldn't be getting that, because we know that something's going to happen. How is it going to look to us? What is it going to look like? We don't know. That's why some of us that have been working on this and have been sitting in the meetings and we're trying to understand the impacts. There will be impacts, because it's not slowing down, it's just taking, you know, taking more speed. So I think that it's important for us to continue to follow these resolutions and see which one is getting more traction. Unfortunately, from today's meeting, most of them are still getting a lot of traction, and what's going to happen is they're going to pull pieces out of, there's eight, there's seven joint ones, and there's one that's just a pass-through one. And it's just very interesting how, what they're thinking and how they're thinking about how this is going to affect the cities. So I think it's important to monitor that, because then this data under the ad valorem tax revenue is going to be very different. So just kind of wanted to put that more, not of a question, but more of like something that we've been speaking about, we've been talking about, and that we're definitely monitoring, and that it's definitely coming our way, and what form that is, we don't know. But in today's morning update that I received, it was just very interesting how quickly these things are going to start moving, especially in the next few weeks, even before the legislature meets, starting on January 13th.
Comments? Questions? Response?
I had one more question, if I could, please. On the same bar graph, there is a discussion, there's a line item here for open space and recreation to the tune of 12.68 million. Does that include the relocation, the proposed relocation of softball and the skate park? Do we have numbers for that?
Could you put your microphone on, please?
It does not.
Do we have any numbers on that? On those two items?
Softball, softball somewhere between 10 and 12 million. I'm not sure what skate park is.
Okay.
They'll take some work with Beach and Park District.
All right. Any other questions? All right, well, and thank you for the update. I think we'll have another update tomorrow of similar nature, and I know any questions that have been asked, we'll come back to them. We'll now turn to review of regular agenda items. Any council members have any items for tomorrow night's agenda to review? Seeing none, public request, anyone with requests other than on the downtown campus?
Yeah, John Pearlman, 498 Northeast A Street. I'm glad they mentioned the 1% transaction fee, because it's a very low hurdle. You know, you talk about this partner, this partner, you're partnering with this Terra Frisbee, you know, Terra Frisbee, and they're your, our partner of the city, but this is a private equity deal for them. They're, they're looking to turn this around in five to seven years. So they're going to build the structures, and then within five to seven years, they're going to exit to a REIT, and they're no longer going to be around. And by the way, the deal, there's a reason why it's structured as a lease and not a sale, is because it's, that enables, they're not putting any money down on this deal.
Mr. Pearlman, do you have public requests not relating to downtown?
All right, yeah, public requests, all right, we'll touch on that tomorrow, but that's really important. All right, so tomorrow, I'm sorry that Mr. Zervis isn't here. This was a really important presentation, and I have some comments I wish he was here to hear, and I'm sorry he's missing all of this. Regarding ordinance to amend the fiscal year 24, 25 through the Fourth Budget Amendment, which is upcoming, a vote on that for tomorrow, you're, you're seeking to take in excess capital from the Building Permit Services Fund, almost $13 million, and you want to remove it from the Building Permit Services Fund, and you want to deploy it into the General Fund, 3.3 million, and into the Capital Improvements Program, 9.39 million. When this plan fails, and by the way, we know from Mr. Zervis that once these, once these, these funds are put into the General Fund and the CIP, there's restrictions, nobody can access it. Mr. Zervis had a very interesting explanation at one council meeting. He whittled away over $600 million and told us that we only had around $35 million to use. So we know that once this money is, you know, put into, into these obscure arenas, we can't access them anymore. The building department, as it stands right now, is about 23,000 square feet. This money should be put into a specialized fund, or simply kept in the Building Permit Services Fund, because once the Terra Frisbee plan is turned down, which it will be in March, we should rebuild the building, the building services department right there, and we can use this excess capital that's been accumulated in the fund to do so. And based on analysis, this, this money could fund at least 70% of the building, and it could even fund the entire building, an entire new building at 23,000 square feet. So I would urge you to not, not vote on that tomorrow and leave it in for new, new leadership when they come in in March, and we'll deal with that.
Hold Mr. Leibelson, please. Mr. Sohaney, there, I think there were some inaccurate statements there. I'm sorry, Mr. Zervis wasn't there to, to speak to them, but can you correct some of them, please?
I'll tell you, I, it's kind of hard for me to correct them. I couldn't follow it specifically. So what I'll have, John, what I'll do is I'll have Mr. Zervis take a look at your questions, and we'll reply back to you tomorrow. Is that okay?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, John.
Yeah, I would say that, I know the comment that once funds go into the General Fund, they can't be touched, is not an accurate statement. Mr. Leibelson?
Mike Leibelson, 398 Northeast Third Court. I'd like to add an agenda item for tomorrow, if we can, which is, what is the appropriate discount rate, not just for the Terra Frisbee project, but for any project that this council considers where dollars are going into the future? Terra Frisbee is using a 4.5%, which is a T-bill rate. It's the most artificially low discount rate that could potentially be applied. I've worked for multiple corporations overseeing tens of billions of dollars worth of capital improvement programs. This, for that example, they're saying that we don't share until they get a 10% pref, it's preference rate. So therefore, the discount rate should be 10% plus, so maybe 12%. They should be discounting those cash flows at 12%. For all of these projects we're looking at, this council should come up with a discount rate. I mean, that's just a natural thing that most companies do. They say, we're going to look at all of our projects, and we're going to look at future cash flows, we're going to say, here's the discount rate that we use. It's definitely not a T-bill 4.5% super safe rate. It's, it's something like a 12% rate for some, for a project like Terra Frisbee's, and we should determine that for all projects where we've got delayed cash flows. I think, Mr. Wiger, you were attempting to get to that point, but I just wanted to make sure that we get that on the agenda. Thank you.
Any further public comments not relating to the downtown? And yes, Ms. Pashke, we did not respond earlier. Your question was about the sign placement. I did see, I saw your email, I knew I would see you today, and I didn't get a chance to respond since it was sent so close to our meeting. I know staff has a response for you in terms of the placement of the location. I don't know if that went out yet, but it will. I saw something relating to that. If that's what you're asking about, we have that covered, and you're welcome to speak on any other non-
New issues?
Yes, new issue. Pam Pashke, 341 Southwest Second Street. So I just wanted to bring up, I had brought this up before, about the police station design, that in order to get this bond issue passed by the people, I think you're really going to have to consider redesigning the facade of the police station that's proposed up on, up by Spanish River Library, because it looks elaborate, glassy, like a fancy building, and I know that there's a reason for the building, there's a need for the building, and I think you'll have some troublesome pushback if you can't design it so that it looks like a police station and not a downtown office plaza.
Anyone else?
Jonathan Ungian, 6501 Congress Avenue. So I won't be here tomorrow night, so you don't have to listen to my three minutes a couple of times. So I'm going to just briefly speak on a topic that apparently I'm not supposed to speak about, which is the government campus, a little bit. So I'd just like to discuss the City Hall, 30,000 square feet ceremonial City Hall, which is going to cost tens of millions of dollars. And I think that this city can put a lot better use towards the money, towards, towards a better purpose in this city than a ceremonial City Hall. I don't think building a permit building, which is going to cost tens of millions of dollars, or rebuilding a police station there, or building, I, I think it's all irresponsible. I don't think it's the best use of the land, and I think that that money should go towards acquiring more parks, as we've discussed, and I've heard in the previous meeting, not today, but two weeks ago, a land trust, whatever way you want to frame it. I think if you had $30 million to buy a few people's homes and to build pocket parks close to where people live, I think that will go a long way in this city to, to a better community environment. So I would, I just, I think that the funds can be better used than to do a ceremonial City Hall. I think a bigger police station maybe with a better presence, a small, slightly smaller, I've seen 30,000 square feet tossed around, that's as big as it is now. But I think doing government buildings, which are in essence an office building plus the public coming, are not the best use of the land there. So that's all I really wanted to say, and I hope that tomorrow can be another step forward in seeing a vision that is what's best for the community beyond just financial, because, you know, quality of life is very important, should be up there, 1A with the financial benefit, because this is something that should be used by the people in all parts of the town. I think that the, the structure and the building that we have now, the, the, the park that I've seen with the east side certainly is that, with a promenade, you know, that can have that, that mixed area that you have something to eat, you walk across the street to a nice park, that certainly isn't what, how it's being used currently. Thank you.
My name is Judy Morrow, 1305 Northeast Fifth Avenue. I think it's so important to talk about the traffic, because yesterday we were eating outdoors at the, at a restaurant between the intercoastal on Palmetto and Federal Highway. Before we even sat down at the restaurant, a speeding car went on Palmetto Park Road to try to get over the bridge. Then another sports car went racing the other way, speeding on Palmetto, where you have all these new yellow fluorescent lights and everything. I mean, we didn't even want, it almost made us want to go somewhere else to eat. Then, when we sit down, all of a sudden, a person gets up and goes out to their car, and what do you call it? The meter person is there giving them a ticket. This is a big party that was eating at the outdoor restaurant, and, but they didn't give tickets to the speeders on Palmetto Park Road, but you're giving tickets to people that are eating. Of course, they have free valet, you know, and all, but they were parked facing south. They weren't parked directly on there, and they got a ticket. It's just unbelievable that we don't have enough police enforcing the speed limit. If you take Northeast Fifth Avenue, right, parallel with the intercoastal, that is a straight street. People speed all the time. They don't just speed on Northeast Fifth Avenue. Guess what they do? They cross the double yellow line to go around them. It's unbelievable that we haven't had accidents. We need to put speed bumps on Northeast Fifth Avenue. One time, they talked about closing off Northeast Fifth Avenue, but nope, that didn't happen. They also, when we talked to the city before, they said, the city cannot put speed bumps there because of the ambulance, ambulances, and also because of the boaters. Well, we used to have a lawyer that lived on the corner. He used to call the city once a week, and they still did not, you know, it needs, we need more traffic control and less parking meter people.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll close the time for public comment. I wanted to respond to a few things first, just, we'll go in reverse order. Mr. Sohaney, perhaps we can send Ms. Morrow some information, both on our extensive efforts in terms of traffic enforcement, which have engaged over the last few years, as well as information on the processes, which are all on our website, to request speed bumps. Ms. Morrow is correct that on key arteries, the speed bumps are not possible on every street because they're key arteries. If I can turn to the financial question that was raised, I think there was some confusion in terms of, or the comments might be confusing to some people, in terms of how the percentage rent is calculated, how it's not tied to a discount rate, and also, can you, can you speak to that first, please, Mr. McShay? And also, second, the different discount rates that have been used, because the 4.5% is not, is on the discount on flows in, but the, the underlying assumptions in terms of revenue is significantly more conservative.
So, so the rents, the rent, the percentage rent is based on the value that the developer's able to achieve. That number is 7% on residential, 4% on retail, office, and hotel revenues achieved. That's been modeled throughout the entire life of the lease, and at the moment, we are using a very conservative 2% escalator as kind of the basis by which we're calculating those figures.
And, and just on that, that 2% applies to the fixed rental payments that are independent of the percentage rent, which is additional monies?
Correct. Okay. In terms of the discount rate, and I, respectfully, you know, my, the practice that I lead, we have 100 city, county, state clients across the United States, including Los Angeles County, state of New York, in Florida, Pinellas County, Pompano, Hollywood, Broward County, you know, and in all of the public-private partnerships that we are considering for those entities, which we are doing today, you know, we are using a discount rate of between 4% and 5%. That's been accepted by multiple, multiple municipalities across South Florida. In addition, that conversation about which discount rate we should use, there was an extensive conversation between Mr. Zervis, CBRE, and PFM. And because of those numbers that I just quoted, 4% to 5%, we landed on a 4.5%, 4.5% is the appropriate discount rate for the evaluation of this model. I'll also point out that that is typical of the borrowing rate for cities, counties, and states that we are using today, and so that seems to line up with everything that we've seen across the United States. the United States.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? And is there any other follow-up? Ms. Sohaney?
No more follow-ups, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, then, we'll turn to your report.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report.
Thank you. Councilmember report, starting on my left. Mr. Thompson?
No report.
Ms. Naclis?
No report.
Ms. Drucker?
No report.
Mr. Wigder? Your microphone's not on.
I do have a couple of things to say in two parts, between today and tomorrow. You guys got it? Okay. Oh, here's the first three city halls. This is the original city hall on Federal Highway. The middle picture is the city hall that was built in 1964. That's the present location of the current city hall. And in 1983, the, let's call it the city hall annex was added to the back of city hall, which was, was really the front, right? So we know that's what we currently have today. Of course, we are not there right now. We're here since, since COVID, okay? So I spent a little time, you know, within the archives again, trying to look at the history again, you know, really trying to understand more, because I want to make sure that I'm fully informed, and I'm trying to convey as much information as I can to the public about some of the things that I'm thinking about, and some of the things that they're thinking about as well. So the first aerial, of course, on the left side, is the 1959 aerial of Memorial Park. And you could see clearly that there looks like two softball, or two, sorry, two fields for baseball, and there might even be a third, you could say a third reverse triangle, you know, on the northern little field there. Nothing else was, was built at the time. Most of the houses, you could see they're just starting to come in after World War II, even though it was a little bit time after World War II. There's the scout shed over there, and you could see that the banyan trees are there. Fast forward to 1963, to 1980, you could see what happened there. The city hall, the, the current city hall was, was built in that location. Of course, the community center was built, and the tennis courts were, were built as well in that time. You could see that the north field was somehow converted. I think I was talking to Ms. Susan Gillis, and she was saying that around 1980, the soccer star, Pelé, was really popular, so they converted that field to really be more soccer, and the, you know, they truncated the, the baseball diamond to make it more soccer for that time. And you could see the northern sector of the Memorial Park, really nothing happened there. And then, of course, in the right side, in 1983, you could see the present city hall annex was, was added. But on the right side, the east side of Second Avenue, you could see the downtown library is circled in black, and you could see that there was a north-south thoroughfare, right? There, the additional, you know, that, that strip center is still there on the corner where the seed is, but it turns out there was much more retail in there infilling that, so it was like a little retail village over there. And then I forgot, on the north-north side, where the library currently is today, my understanding is from Mr. Brown, it was a lumber mill or something like that. It was completely, it was completely industrial. So you could kind of see, they already had a little shopping village, shop, shopping village there, and then, of course, the police station was built after that. A little bit deeper dive into the original plans of the 1964 city hall, actually, I found to be quite remarkable. The council chambers, of course, were renovated in the 1980s to their current configuration, so I don't know what happened to architecture and design in the 1980s, just to say, not a fan. But the accordion doors, so the council chambers had accordion doors to open up, so that when there was enough, when there was a lot of people, like you, when you go to the, you know, Boca West, or when you go to these, you know, galas and all these whatnot at these places, the walls opened up to allow, allow a larger amount of people to come in there, and that additional public gallery had an overflow. So again, if you had large meetings with lots of people who are passionate about something, we could just open up the wall and, you know, and, and do it there. So I thought that was really interesting. Mr. Brown, of course, is a wealth of information, and the original 1964 city hall had beautiful terrazzo floors. Terrazzo floors, you could, if you understand, have the, like, Fort Lauderdale Airport is now with terrazzo floors. Beautiful floors and colored glass block to welcome the public into city hall. It had a welcoming entry and a covered entry, nice. I didn't think it was overly ornate. I thought it was actually quite, quite tasteful at the time. And of course, the city hall, so this was designed, wait, go back, you could, if you look at the very bottom there, you could see it was designed in 1963, and then boom, in 1964, it was up. So they knew how to do things fast back then, and the ribbon cutting happened. And then you could see there used to be a water tower behind the city hall there, and I pointed a blue hour because there used to be fountains in front of city hall. Of course, here's the complete, you know, larger look at the original design, and a little zoom in here, you could see the commission chambers were here, of course, those didn't change with the wall. But if you look on the right-hand side of the original plan, you could see that the two fountains in the front were memorial fountains. And I guess, of course, over time and development and the decades, those disappeared, but someone did think about it, and I think, I think that's pretty cool. Of course, by the time it was built, as Mr. Brown has told me, it was already too small as soon as it was built. So in the plans, it says here, future corridor to build city hall extension. That city hall extension is currently where the city does its work in the 1983, in the three-story building there, but it, it was planned for an extension. And of course, this is city hall today, actually it was last Friday when I went, let's take a picture there of, of what's going on. So you could see what happened in the 1983 addition. They covered up the original 1964 mid-century modern building with this kind of modern Mediterranean kind of looking thing to create this arcade thing here, and that's what we currently have today. So when I think about the beauty of city hall and whatnot, one of the things, again, we're not designing the quote "city hall" right now. We have time to do this, but one of the things when I look at this is that now that we have the time, now that we've purchased 6551, we have the time to really analyze this. And so one of the things that I hope we can consider is a proposal to potentially restore and enhance the existing city hall as a modern interpretation of a mid-century modern masterpiece. And Mr. Brown and I have, having discussions, we believe that the original terrazzo floor is under there, that it is under the garbage that they put on top, and that it can be restored. Of course, a modern interpretation of the 64 city hall could be, include the following. The 1983 rear portion should be knocked down. It's falling apart. The water's pouring in. It has to go. We could restore and redesign the interior, to Ms. Unjin, Mr. Unjin's point, at a reasonable cost, although restoration could be, you know, costly, but at a more reasonable cost, and redesign the interior for modern uses. Grants are also available for historic preservation, so there's a potential to save some money there. We could build a new city hall with just council chambers, and as said by many other people, a community room for use at other times. Veterans groups, the VFW, VA, others can use it. There's a discussion of the post office as a potential, that it could be moving away from Meizner Plaza, so we could approach the federal government about integrating post office and our police station into that. We could use reclaimed products and, of course, get lead and historic designation and place it in the land trust, so that the philanthropic community can participate in the rebirth, just like the Addison. Of course, this community space can double as a museum slash historic society. And by the way, right now, the Boca Raton Historic Society has seven different storage units stashed across the city, and they pay $70,000 a year to store the artifacts that, annually, to store the artifacts that we enjoy all the time, and that they display at all these places. So we have, you know, an obligation to get her more space so she can keep these treasures. I'd like to thank Susan Gillis and George Brown for spending so much time for me, with me these past couple weeks, hours and hours. Historic preservation can help us honor the past and move towards this future. This future, this Memorial Park Museum District can be a great, wonderful draw to get people to enjoy the park, cultural offices, cultural offerings, and get people off the train here in Boca. Every project evolves. There is no project in the universe that has been built and said, God, this plan is so perfect, don't touch a thing. Everyone renovates their house, renovates their bathroom, renovates their kitchens. This process, this project, over the last eight months, with public input and passion, has evolved to where we're sitting right now, and to, to the things that we're talking about right now. And it is good that we're doing this. It is good that we're exploring this opportunity because of a lot of the issues that we, we talked about here. There's such an opportunity to do some great things here, and, you know, the idea is, because we've now bifurcated the project with Second Avenue, and we've acquired 6551 to do, to basically hold our administrative services, we, we have something that the city didn't have in 2019. We have time. We have flexibility. We don't need to rush into the full redevelopment, redeployment of the west side. We could design it with the public. We could put it together in the right thing. Again, when I look at a picture like this, a modern interpretation of the 1964 would be so cool, and I think people would absolutely enjoy it. So let's spend the time to do this right. Of course, Central Park began under a land trust, and of course, there was 33 plans for Central Park. It was basically a P3. It was a, and so Frederick Olmsted, he won the design, but he wasn't just, but there was many, many of them. And of course, Central Park has the most, has the, has the most recognized land trust in the world. I'm going to speak more about the opportunity here to kind of really talk about the land trust and some of the opportunities for this, for the Dixie Manor Museum, for the potential city hall museum, for the Boca Raton city, old city hall, potentially to be in the land trust. I'm going to talk more about that tomorrow. So those are my thoughts right now. Let's noodle on that, and then we'll reconvene tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you. As was said, this is not, there is, the design will take some time. If we move forward, we're still designing things, so that's things to consider. Don't know if we're going to land on an issue tomorrow, just two things to flag now. We did have water damage on that first floor building from 1964, extensive water damage, so I'm not sure that restoration is viable. And two, while I appreciate the need for more storage, I don't think finding that valuable downtown land for storage is the best place. There's many other places in the city, but appreciate, appreciate you raising some issues. I'll save my report for tomorrow evening. With nothing further to come before us, we're adjourned at 5:49. Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you.[1148.33]